Okay, I'd like to call to order the City Council Committee of the whole review of the 2018 operating budget, meeting for Monday, Oct. -- no, this is not Monday, this is Wednesday. I got the wrong one. Wednesday, October 24th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Pickler.
Here.
Alder Corr.
Here.
Alder Rupi.
Here.
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Spade.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Mayor O'Conner.
Here. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will start with Mark's budget overview. I think, does everyone have a copy of -- is this it, Mark?
Yes. So I just want to thank everybody for being here so early, 5:30. Before we get started, I just kind of want to go through the process and how this went. So basically, what started this is we meet, I myself, met with Mary, we kind of went over kind of directions we wanted, kind of the goals. You know, the goals was to keep the same, continues, no changes to service, keep the service the same, no additional services. If there was additional staff, that there would have to be documentation why you would need staff. We did start a little bit, behind a little bit, we did have a bunch of, not behind, but this year we had a bunch of positions that were increased during the years. So it made, you know, a little bit challenging, but we were able to work with that. So the process was Mary, then we set the mayor, and then I set the directions out to the department heads, and they met with the committees. And then from there, we put that together, and we sat down, each individual department head sat down, myself and Mary, and went over their budgets. And we asked a lot of questions. It was over a couple of days here. Got a lot of detail from there. And then from there, me and Mary met probably maybe two or three times after that to make changes. So there is a lot, there's a lot of, not a lot of big changes, but there is changes in here that we did make to the budget. So the goal, the goal was to, there's two things that happened this year. One, TIF 9 is closing, that closes officially December, I believe it's December 6. And we, what is, closes December 6, we have to keep it open one more year.
You mean TIF 2.
TIF 2, yeah. It closes on December 6, TIF 2 does. So what, when that closes, here's a sheet here, I put it in front of everybody's desk. It shows, and these are estimates, and they're very good estimates. What happens in 2018, which is this year, we'll close that TIF, and there's, as you see at the very bottom, is a fund balance of $3,061,117. That's how much money we'll allocate to all the other districts. So at the end of December, we'll get this money into our fund balance. As you can see, I used, below there, it kind of breaks it out per district, district, fairly close, they're, you know, I'd say they're within a couple thousand here or there, but our share is roughly 117,000, and we were using 115,000. So where we, 117,000, give or take, will go into our fund balance in December. So we use that analysis in our parent of budget, as you see the other shares to the other districts. But to keep it open for Renew Manona in 2019, we do get that increment, which is roughly right now $1.5 million. We have to keep open this one more year. So once that ends up happening, we don't get that equalized value on to the, to the tax levy yet. So we know for next year, when this is officially closed, for 2020, we'll roughly get about $325,000 to $300,000 addition to the levy, to the base levy. So we use that knowing, we use some fund balance knowing that was going to happen in the year after. So when you see some of these numbers, why we did that is because we know that's going to happen in 2020. So that was kind of our basis for how we did the budget. We kind of get into more detail on that later, but that's, that's kind of the basis of the budget right now. So we did use a lot of fund balance, and we'll kind of explain that here. So a lot of this is from page, kind of just talk with just a general summary. A lot of this on page four. On page four. All right, I have the first number, I guess I have the wrong number in there. Okay, so the lawful levy increase right now was $246,700. We basically went exactly up to that levy limit, and then we balanced it by using additional fund balance that we just talked about, that we'll get in 2020. So the first slide is, the first line is wrong. Must have saved and wrong. So total property increase is $374,139, or 5.32 percent. The total practice, total property tax levy is $7,400, $7,000, $7,421,310. The total lawful levy is $246,700, right after, underneath that. Non, debt service is exempt from the levy limit from that $246,700. That increased a combination for $128,139.
So Mark, before you go on, which number did you say was wrong on the first?
The first, the first line on the slide, the first bullet point.
And can you say what it is again, what the right number is again?
Total property increase.
$246 plus the $128.
That's a 374.
Oh, it should be 374, it should be total pop, total property levy, tax levy increase of $374,139. So total, in that little box there on page four, 374,839, or 5.32 percent. So the mill, part portion of the mill rate increased 6.56 per thousand, or eight cents from last year, or a percentage of 1.16 percent increase. The average increase on a house is $165.76, based on an average assessed house. And this average assessed house is basically, take the assessment roll, take the total number of, the total land value for the assessment for the year and total improved value, and I get it, just get an, get an average, and that's the number I come up with. It's not the median, it's just the average based on the assessed house, based on the assessment roll. So that's $317,100. Last year was $295,200. So if you have that increase, your tax bill will go up $165,000, $165.76. So that will have, that would be the increase, if you fall within that range. Total expenditures did increase 8.65 percent, a little over a million dollars. That, total revenues did increase 17 percent, 17 percent from last, from 2018. In the budget, there's a lot of assumptions that are used and numbers we used. So the non-union salaries increased 2.25 percent. Currently, we are not under contract with the police and fire, that's why it says non-union salaries. Wisconsin's retirement decreased, we'll be paying to the state in 6.7 percent, 6.55. We had a good number this year for health insurance, it only increased 3 percent. With kind of the increases with adding staff over the last couple of years, especially when you add staff to the public safety with the fire, we had three over the last three or four years. There's an increase in worker confidence insurance, so that's increased $10,000. We did add, this budget additional, police officer, that's roughly $92,000. There's a park employee starting in September in the budget, that's roughly $22,000. We do have in there a sign consultant still, in case it comes back with the sign consultant, that's right now, if there's more work we need to be done, so that's $15,000. The library, there is a teen library, we increased hours from 20 hours to 28 hours, that's roughly $18,000. Why the large number? Because that assumes that the person, because right now the position is vacant. So if that person could come in and get health insurance, and that, we have to account for that right away. So that number could be flexible if you hire somebody and they don't take insurance, or single, that number would drop. But right now, we assume that their family insurance for that, that's why the number's high. We also include in the budget a full year of after-school program in the rec department, and now they have a new summer day program, which will be in the 2019 budget. Paid parental leave fund, we set up a new fund for paid parental leave, we'll kind of go in detail on that when we get to that fund tonight. You know, another thing happened to the budget, which we already talked about, is the positions that were hired throughout the year. So the firefighters started basically, April 1st was part of the budget, dispatcher was July 1st. The two rec, the rec assistants and the senior center employee, they were not budgeted to start, they're basically part-time, now they're full-time. But that's when they were increased, when we did the budget amendments, right around those times. There is a, in the water utility, utilities, there is a new position there, roughly about $61,000. Debt payment increase, about $334,000. And then our fund balance is $2,600, estimated to be $265,954, or 23 percent of the general operating budget. That's on page two, it's kind of a breakout of that. And that again, that includes, put $815,000 in there for, related to the TIF payout that's coming here when we close it in December.
Sorry, Mark, so this is after, that general fund balances after this budget, if we pass it as is?
Yes, with all the changes to the fund, using the fund balance numbers and everything. Couple of revenues that impacted the budget, transportation aid decreased basically $76,000. Reason why that's, this is the max, the only max you're allowed to drop is 10 percent of the year before. On transportation aids, we had Manona Drive was in there, and it's basically, it's a six-year roll-on average. The last couple of years have been Manona Drive, and they fell off, and we haven't done much for public works projects as far as street projects. Currently, we will be doing public works projects, but you know, it's six, six months address. I assume they're going to fall one more year, and then we'll stabilize after that, based on the numbers that I've seen. There is a new revenue source, personal property revenue, it's new for 2019, I don't know if people are aware of the change. The state no longer taxes people for personal property. Some types of personal property, some are still, it's a formula, right now we're going to give basically $36,000 for that. In the end, I think it might be okay, that this offsets that, because our personal property was fluctuating all the time, up and down. So one year it was high, and next year it was kind of low. So it actually will stabilize, I think it will stabilize us, but it is a new for this year, and it will be continuing on for the future. This does have an effect for the TIFs. For a lot of communities within, I don't know if you've been hearing a lot about this, within the state, when they made this change, a lot of people had a lot of personal property in TIFs. They know they've long got that full value, which they should have got in those TIFs. So a lot of communities that basically, they had a manufacturing company, some company had a lot of personal property, which we don't have any of that. They, they're taking hits on this, so, and their TIFs, it's been an issue right now. For us, we're not, I think the most we'll lose is maybe one or $2,000. With this, basically what's happening is, we collect our share, but the other districts get their share now. They don't give us the full share anymore, that's kind of the difference. But our share's been very low, so it won't affect our TIF more than $1,000 per year.
So this, but the, the new personal property revenue from the state, that's to replace the personal property tax that we used to collect?
Right.
And how does that number compare to what we collected?
Well, it takes, basically took the equalized value away of those properties. Basically, they matched it up, basically, it was for dollar for dollar worth of us. They took, basically, the value was taken off, and they couldn't, I don't know what the formula they used, but if I would have did the formula, it's basically would have been this amount. So it's pretty equal to what we have.
Is that formula in the statutes, or is that some, I'm just wondering, you know, going forward, a lot of times you see these promises made, and then they kind of get, the money gets whittled down in future.
It's like, I don't know if it's in the statute, but I know it comes from the DNR, or Department of Revenue, so I'll see if it's a statute or if it's just a formula. Building permits increased by $10,000. We will eventually be coming here with an increase to the permit fees. Just been talking with GFC for us, they're basically saying we're losing money with our permit fees. They're not, they said ours are pretty low right now, so I'm working with them directly, basically come back to the council and then increase the permit fees. To, so right now, it's estimating about $10,000, but by the time we get, it could be higher or lower. But I assume that's going to be right around $10,000. Excavation permits, right away permits are increasing this year. One, I don't know if you're aware of the telecoms that are coming in, and they're burying the cable, we have to get these permits. We have one so far this year, and we'll do, do more in the future. So that's increasing, one permit alone, you got for AT&amp;T, I believe was basically like $26,000. So I think that number's going to increase, I don't know if they'll get a big one every year like that, but it definitely is going to increase here in the future. Court fines increased by $10,000, one, because of our grant work we've been doing, and two, of our collection processes have been pretty aggressive. Interest income increased by $30,000. Reposing use, $563,416 of fund balance, that's still within our policy, 15 to 20. Right now, I believe it's 20, when I said 23 percent. So what makes up that fund balance number we're using? Right now, as you were, Walmart situation, we couldn't change the Walmart, we couldn't chase, change, after we settled with Walmart, it was too lange, too late to change it for this year. So they'll get the full bill, and then they'll let the client, and we'll reimburse them for that, it's basically like $60,000. We did transfer $200,000 to debt service, we are starting a fund balance, and the paid parental leave, starting with $30,000 in there. And I put TIF closing, we're using of that, so basically, we're using $273,000 of the TIF closing at inner 15 we're talking about. But we know next year, we're going to get around $325,000 to $350,000 inner base, we're assuming that we can make that up next year. Because we know, we want to do these, add these positions this year, so we know we'll have that money next year. So we're not, the gap will be filled with next year's levy increase with the TIF closing. And we are still using fund balance in the debt service to about $300,000.
That's in addition to the two rendered up here?
Yeah.
How much is in the, the debt service fund balance?
Uh, basically $300,000, $348,000.
So we're using all of it?
Basically.
Okay.
Again, a challenge ahead for next year will be the transportation aid will decrease again. Healthcare costs, one year it's 7 percent, and this year was 3 percent, so it fluctuates every year. Renew Manona, that's one of the big challenges, I guess we'll have the money, just more operation side, how we're going to implement that. Riverfront, operating costs in the future, how is that going to affect the operating budget, if it does? The increased debt service costs, and this year, as you know, the governor's up for election. We'll have a new year, two-year budget clearly soon, so that could be changes to the state aids and things like that, so that'll be something to watch. Water and sewer, currently we do not have a, our last rate increase was January 2017. We're not planning on increasing the rates, basically right now, we have a natural rate increase, is the way our rate increase is set with public fire protection. So as your assessments go up, your public fire protection is going up, so it's basically right now a natural rate increase. The way, because basically, we basically have a mill rate for public fire protection. I don't know what the mill, I don't know what the number is, so if your, if your assessment goes up, you get a higher, you get your, what everybody's assessment's had been going up over the last couple of years. There's an increase in the public fire protection, so the revenue coming in is probably equal to what a rating, rate increase would be, so we don't need a rate increase right now for water with that. Sewer increase, we're looking at 6.3 percent increase, and this is from Madison Metro Sewer Sanitary District. When we get to the sewer tonight, I want to show a graph, a lot of this because of their capital and their expenses and some I&amp;I. But our expenses are going up just from now, so this is what they told us the increase is going to be, so we're basically just passing along to our customers. But I got a graph here, and when we get into it later, that shows by 2020, we'll basically double what we were paying in 2010 to Madison Metro. So it's, it's just a natural increase that they're passing on to us, and we have to pass on to our customers. Stormwater, with the rate system is set up, it's adjusted based on the budget, so there will be a little bit of an increase. We talked about the stormwater fund tonight, so it will be a slight increase with that. Questions or comments?
Question. In the past, or last, it's this year, with some of the, when we approved new positions, I think all of them, we started sometime during the year. What would your thoughts be about doing that again, or does that, I know it makes the next year's budget more difficult?
We are doing that with one of them.
We're doing with one of them right now. Two new, or three new positions. I think the need for one, for at least for the police department, I think they need, if they could start one-on-one, just because we have had officer on, if we're going to approve it, I mean, if that goes, I would start it as a one-on-one. Because we have had an officer who's been on military duty, so he's been gone for almost, he'll be gone for almost a year, and he'll still be gone, I think, for three, four months into 2019, so it would help with that. So it would save on maybe some overtime cost with that until he gets back. So the one with Jake for the park, I agree with September, because that's when we'll have the riverfront be done. And I believe utilities, I think there's a lot of work in that area that we could just start with that, and that's covered by the rate systems.
Right. They'd be able to, police in particular, would be able to find somebody and hire them by, you know, about January 1?
I think they would, I think, I don't know if the process is starting or list now, just in, just in general, they start every, they get a list, I don't know how many years, but they get a list every like sixth of a year, they'll start a list, and I think they're gathering that information now. I think they'd be right, I think they're jumping at the bit this, get that process started.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then I guess we will start with Diane from the Senior Center. Thank you, Mark.
And I would encourage anybody, this is the time to ask all these department heads how the operation was, if it's, I mean, just more than just numbers too, so make sure everybody feels comfortable with what's going on there.
Yeah.
Especially for the first couple of times here, it's, we learn everything, and we need these meetings, a lot of people, so if they want to ask a lot of questions, go ahead, I'll answer.
Thanks, Mark. Are we on page 132?
Yeah.
So I'll just get started with an overview. Basically, our budget did make a pretty big change for operating for 2019 due to the full-time position that we now have at the Senior Center. As a side note, Lisa Brooks started about three weeks ago, thrilled to have full-time coverage, other than myself at the Senior Center, she's doing great. Catching on to things very quickly, so I thank you for this, and I anticipate it will be a huge help, once she's up and running and is ready for training and done, done and ready to go. So, so thank you for that. So you'll see under wages, that obviously we took a big jump for 2019 compared to 18, and then that also affects the health insurance, with the single coverage for Lisa. The other things that I kind of, if you've seen our budget before, that have increases, even though we keep our operating about the same every year, is that we contract a lot with the Coalition on Aging and with RSVP for ride scheduling. So if you look at contracted senior services, that does increase, so they did a 3 percent increase for the personnel, the case management services, and home tour coordination. Home tour is under program development, so those took slight increases for 2019. And then RSVP, this looks like quite a jump, it's, if you look at the actual increase, it's about a 7 percent increase. But this is to pay for a ride scheduler who coordinates volunteers who bring seniors to medical rides for transportation. That, when I got further details, it seems like a large jump because it's a small budget number. This ride scheduler was getting paid $1,369, and their board decided to bring her up to like the living wage recommendation of $15 an hour. So that's where the increase jumped, so she's not getting paid huge amounts of money, but it is a 7.2 percent increase for 2019. Everything else, we remain the same, because they're non-personnel. Are there any questions for me?
Anybody? No? It's perfectly clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Next up is community media, Will, this is page 105. Okay.
All right, thank you. Similar to Diane, there's very limited change with the community media operating budget. The, the changes you'll see are within the, I guess it's the media budget as, the television budget as opposed to the radio budget. As you know, the, the fees we get, the revenue is from, the franchise fees from Charter and AT&amp;T, that's the revenue, along with the school district revenue that we get each year per our city school contract. So if we look just real quick at the part-time wages between 2019 and 2018, you'll see about a $4,000 jump. And that is because we hired a youth apprentice from the high school, and he's through the Dane County School Consortium, which is right at the Nichols School there. And so he'll be a two-year apprentice, his junior year this year, and then next year, his senior year as well. And he is wanting to go into the media arts field, specifically film at this particular time. We'll see where his passions lie afterwards, and he is already a very much an active member, staff member, I should say, going on lots of video shoots, doing lots of graphics, doing lots of work. So he's already got his hands into things right away. And that, that constitutes 450 hours a week, excuse me, a week, a year for two years, so 900 hours over two years. So that's where, where some of the increase is. I've also asked that we increase the part-time wages from $9 to $10 this year, just to be a bit more competitive with pretty much every other industry around us, that the, you know, high schoolers and people of, you know, teens, our jobs they're getting are definitely $10 or more, or right around there, so I want to stay competitive. We've had some people step away in the past because they can make more money elsewhere. The other line item that has changed significantly for the better, I would say, is the gas and electric utilities. That has been taken off the table. The gas and electric utilities were for this room, our payment of gas and utilities for this room, which I believe was some percentage of the gas and utilities bill for this entire building. But I think it's, I believe what has happened is, it's the opinion that we are providing a service in this room as opposed to having it be our room. And therefore, we, we're not owed the money, or we're not, we shouldn't be the payee of the money, I guess, is the way I interpreted the idea. So we're happy for that, and that again, that basically gives us an idea of, you know, gave us the ability to hire core as our youth apprentice.
Mark, did you want to?
Yeah, I just want to comment on that. So basically, what happened is there, where did that money go? The money went to, to the general fund, because right, currently it was paid, 2018 is paid by the media, which is paid by the franchise fees. It was our, we sat down and talked a lot about this, and decided it's best to go to the general fund as part of the building fund, as part of their as part of the building fund, as part of their, their, as part of their MGN E costs. So you'll see in the building fund, there's an increase and that's what it's from, is basically moving that cost over to there. So that's where that money went to. So basically, we kind of, you know, it's for the community center, it's for the city, for these meetings here. We also do court in here, so we thought it was probably best instead of having the media pay for it, the, the general fund should pay for that.
I think when we originally made that decision to cover that portion out of the media money, we were having this distance learning program here. So we were using this room a lot for media. And it made sense to take it out of that budget. Plus, we were not getting a lot more in franchise fees also. But yeah, now it's just more generally, especially since we've revamped the furniture and everything. I think more and more departments are using it and it isn't strictly used by media anymore. So that was my rationale.
And then I would say another line item that has changed a little bit more than others would be the studio maintenance. And that has to do with mainly just a software subscription. We added another Adobe software subscription that is $50 a month, which comes out to about, you know, 600 bucks. So that and it looks like a couple of other small things. Put it, and it looks like about additional $800. So that's about all that increase is. Otherwise, everything, you know, within a few dollar amounts have stayed the same throughout. You'll see in the radio budget, we no longer have, which I believe maybe even last year, we only had a small amount. We no longer have consulting fees because Tom Tuber is no longer with us. So that's saving us money that we can put elsewhere, obviously, as well.
Anyone have any questions? Nancy?
I have a question related to revenues, which is I'm seeing the year-end estimate is 120. Where we budget, on the franchise fees, where we budgeted for 128. So that says to me in 2018, the franchise fees dropped more than we anticipated? And for 2019, we're not, we're saying no drop at all?
Right. Well, actually, the only way I can really estimate what we're getting for, for next year is what we've gotten so far this year. I can just look at it and go, okay, the first quarter, we got X amount of money. So I'll times that by four and there's hopefully what we get next year. Yes, so this year so far, we've gotten quite a bit less than what, what I, what I thought we were going to get.
Right, so I'm just wondering how realistic it is to be then flatlining for next year, given that we know that it's going down.
Correct.
Mark, do you have?
Well, the reason why it's going down this year is AT&amp;T is leveling off. They're the big reason why it's going downhill. Reason why we kind of kept it flat right around 120, 119 is because of the riverfront apartments going in. So when you get more apartments, you know, they'll get some more franchise. We're assuming there's going to level it off a little bit there. So that's, you know, it's kind of the thought process behind that, so that should level. And I'm starting to see AT&amp;T leveling off a little bit too now. So I think we're kind of hitting the bottom with AT&amp;T. So I think that this number here is a pretty good number.
AT&amp;T pulled out of their U-verse.
Right.
Program here and switching everybody to digital, so, but most of that.
A lot of them are going charter now. Looks like they're moving the charter. Or with the new riverfront apartments coming in, they got more chances.
We anticipate some of those people will at least be going.
Right, although those won't really hit until the end of the year, right?
Well, it's possible. I mean, every year, this is up and down.
Right.
We just don't know, yeah.
But yes, to your point, I, I think as we go this year, we'll have a better idea of how much we're actually going to see a trend in decline. And if we're seeing a trend of 5,000 or more for three years now, then we know we better budget a good, a good amount last year or next year for 2020, I should say. Because yes, there certainly is a possibility that the 119 for 2019 might be, might be a few thousand more than we actually get.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Ted?
When, there are people that just get internet from charter and they don't pay for cable, per se. Do we not get a franchise fee?
No, it's only cable subscription. So you have to, that's why DirecTV and those, those types of industries that are not cable and their satellite and things like that are not part of it. So it's only a cable, literally a cable subscription.
Okay.
TDS is looking to come in here too, so that's also another assumption we're kind of looking at.
Okay.
Doug?
How much is in the fund, the fund balance?
About 45, I think you said, maybe 40, somewhere around there.
Yes, $41,000 roughly. $41,250.
So we do have some money to cover.
Correct.
A potential drop of income. Anyone else? Alder Kitzler?
I know the radio station was oftentimes run by volunteers. I know a number of them have retired and maybe that was some sort of cost savings. I know you mentioned Tom Tuber saved us a little bit when he retired. Can you talk a little bit more about the operations of that and then with kind of that turnover? Maybe I just don't understand the full gamut of it, but.
Yeah.
I'm just interested in how that works. Because I thought that would be adding costs when those two individuals particularly retired.
Right. And, and we, so when Tom Tuber retired, we were paying, we were giving him a stipend, as you will, or a payment each month to do the programming and to get the programming off the ground. And to, essentially, he was, he was listening to it 18, 20 hours a day, literally at home. And he was programming it from home and coming in and recording the calendar and doing a lot of things, being the eyes and ears of the station all the time. But then he retired and we have Kirk Swenson, who is a volunteer, who's come in and doing a lot of that. I've stepped in and started to help with the community calendar and do some other things. And we have some other volunteers who are now a part of that. When Lindsay walked away, I mean, Lindsay never asked for a dime as far as getting paid for anything. He, everything he did was just purely because he loved it. So we never paid him anything minus maybe 100 or two there for some equipment that he needed or something. So there was no real soft savings when he left, per se. So right now, we are, I'm leaning on volunteers, putting together lists and task lists of things that need to get done and there's ideas of what people would like to do. I'm going to be reformatting the volunteer aspect of it from the program hosts. Up until this point, we've really asked nothing of them other than to show up for their show and tell us they're not going to be there. We're going to change that a little bit, ask a little bit of them each month to put in a little bit of time outside of their show to help us grow and continue. So because, at least my understanding was it was supposed to be an all-volunteer-run radio station. That was the big sell. And then we ended up paying Tom Tuber right away. But now that we're not paying him, I guess I, going back to the original sell of it's completely volunteer minus myself. And I'm trying to just reorganize in that manner. You know, in a year or so, if we're finding that I need to reformat that and put some money in operations or move some things around, I, I feel like I might find that I need to do that. But right now, I'm trying to give the volunteerism a chance to really grow. And they, many of them have surprised me that they're willing to step up and do some things. Will it be sustainable? I, that'll be, that'll be the question.
Thanks.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
Ted?
What happens to the money that is given for the watts? Is that a separate?
Yep, that goes to the Friends of WVMO.
Okay.
And I'm still working with them on how exactly, or what exactly should be done with that money and how do we do that? I've talked with the Friends of the Library and how they kind of work that at, you know, how do they take the money and then bring it back to the library? So it's, makes sense and there's a purpose behind it. So we're still, I think the Friends is still kind of a, a new group that is still trying to figure out what it is that they're there to do other than just raise money or how do they then navigate the waters after they raise the money? And I think that, I'm hoping this next year, we'll smooth that out and figure out some ways on how the money can be used. For instance, one thing I've already talked to a few, a couple volunteers about is how can the Friends group compensate volunteers for helping WVMO as opposed to putting it on the operating budget? How can the Friends group give, you know, Jane Doe 250 bucks for creating this event for WVMO or for being the promotions director or something like that? I don't know how the wording has to be or the payments through a Friends group to have employees or payment of employees. I'm sure there's some logistical, legal things that we'd have to be careful of if we start having employees of the Friends group. But that'd be one way to keep it off of the operating budget for the community media and hopefully give them some incentive to, to do some things.
I think that was part of the original goal, was that the Friends would help defray some of these operating costs over time.
I mean, I guess my concern, and this is something I've talked to Will about. I mean, someone has to administrate it, but the model of public radio, you know, and public television is that you have sponsors who are essentially advertisers. But they're sponsors. They don't get to have ads on there the way we think of commercial radio or television. And then that money supports the administration of the service.
Right.
And we do have some sponsors, right?
Right, and I think that's.
Football games and.
Right. I'm just wondering, I'm just asking the question because now is the time of year when we're going through the budget and thinking about the impact of these amazingly talented and generous individuals, Tom and Lindsay, who, you know, got this thing up off the ground and created it. And now they've stepped away as we knew they would and as they should. But it seems to me that we're not doing a disservice to the community of, you know, dozens of volunteers to potentially think at some point that we should have a paid, you know, Tom Tuber.
Right.
That, that does that administrative, you know, day-to-day stuff that we need to do for our license and for your sanity.
Right.
You know, and I just, I want to raise that issue. And I, and I think that it's, we cert, the popularity of this radio station is unbelievable to me. I mean, I cannot tell you how often I go into a potential client's home and they're listening to WVMO all over the city of Madison. You know, people are listening to it on the west side. I'm stunned at how good the signal is. So my point is just that there's quite a listenership there. There's the potential to have more sponsorship. And then with that comes the potential to fund this. And my concern is that if we don't start thinking about that seriously, you know, you, you and others in the city are going to end up picking up the slack.
Right.
And it's budget season and, you know, in my mind, this could be a revenue-neutral thing. It's like.
That would be nice, yeah. Because, and right now, it's coming out of these franchise fees and those aren't going to.
Yeah, I think.
They're going to keep going down somewhat at least. So yeah, we do have to have.
It's definitely something that may have to change in the future. The challenge, here's where we're seeing a lot of the challenge between fundraising and programming, is when we cross that line between using the programming for fundraising, such as sponsorship, sponsor Manona State Bank or XYZ Company sponsors this particular thing. Now we have to work it into the programming arm of it a little bit and figure that out. And it's not just volunteers getting, getting support outside of the programming. We kind of, if we keep the, like adopt a watt where it doesn't affect the programming that much, it's easier than when we have to affect the programming because now I get involved and a few other people have to get involved to make sure we're getting our sponsorship notified in the right spot. We're getting the number of times each week that we're supposed to. And not that we can't do it, it's just going to be, it's just a little more work and that's why we haven't gone down that road just yet. But I think it's definitely something that eventually probably is going to have to be addressed. I think personally, looking at budgets over the years and the department, I think the community media as a whole will need to morph as time goes by and we see the franchise fees and we see the need of the city changing, that maybe it's not just cable TV, it's other things. What that is, I don't know. But in order to keep it viable, I feel like it's going to have to morph. Otherwise, you know, as cable.
Into doing like some production kind of things you're thinking of or what are you?
You know, I'm not too sure. Like I say, like what the city needs, whatever that might be, might need to morph, especially if we have to start using the general fund to pay for it.
Yeah.
Which might be 10 years from now and possibly could be. But it just seems to me that makes sense that it doesn't focus on cable TV if we're using the general fund to pay for it. Well, now it opens up to many other things. As well as employment, I, there's, there's other things we can do personnel-wise moving forward that could help too.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you and go home to that baby.
Yeah.
Uh, next up, information technology and personnel is Leah. Should we go into closed session right now?
No, I think.
Or do you want to wait till the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
These couple, no, I mean, after Leah's done with her IT stuff.
Yeah.
We also like if it's okay to move up page, per now lead, as long as Leah's out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Say what?
Our IT budget is on page 43.
Yeah, 43.
I'll just hit the highlights here. No major changes in the IT budget. Biggest line item in this budget is for our consultant, Land Tech, because we don't have an IT professional on staff, so we contract for their consulting services. $60,000 averages out to about just under 15 hours a week. So we have a scheduled day. They come every Wednesday. So they're there for eight hours total on Wednesday. And then whenever we need them for any other emergencies or things that can't wait another week, they will come in as well. So that's where we get the average of 15 hours a week for them. We have not increased that budget for 2019. Service contracts, that's things like our contracts for our, our utility and payroll and accounting software. It includes our email licenses and our antivirus software and voter registration and our muffin contract. That, those, all, that line item went up by $5,200, just increases in all those contracts. T1 line is the 911 line. The data processing supplies line, we actually reduced that from 2,500 to 1,000. Part of that is because most of our copiers now are under service contracts and toner comes as part of the service contract. So we're not spending out of pocket for toner. So we reduced that line item. The web maintenance, that is the cost to host our city website and the cost for the SSL security certificate for the website. So that's an annual cost. And then we have a $10,000 equipment maintenance and repair line item. That's just basically anything IT-wise that breaks or needs to be replaced that we had, did not budget for, expect to break in the capital budget, goes under that line item. And that is pretty unpredictable. Our actual to date as of June 30th in that account was $859, but I just checked today and we're up to 4,400. We had to replace a couple of computers unexpectedly, a couple of phones unexpectedly in the last couple of months. So that's a pretty unpredictable line item.
I have a question. If we're shifting 911 to Dane County, do we still require the T1 line?
Did we talk to Sarah about that, Mark?
I think we need it for at least next year.
Yeah, I think we need it for at least one more year.
Okay. Anyone else? Andrew?
I have a quick question about the website maintenance. I know that we, in our original contract, were due for like an upgrade. When, does that expire and what's been maybe the progress on that, if any?
The upgrade does not expire, so we can do our upgrade whenever we want. And the plan is for us after the budget to get going on that upgrade.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Nancy?
I know Leah, that, that the, at least the draft of the communications needs assessment that we did, one of the top priorities was to increase the IT support to more hours a week. a week because it's very thin and it ultimately ends up on your shoulders more often than not in the absence of personnel. And I know that we're kind of on hold with that project in the absence of, of staff, but I'm wondering, you know, if that's something that, that we should be maintaining at that level or, or is that something that we could go back, you know, mid-year if we need to, need to increase it once we, once our personnel situation settles out? What would you-
Did you want to speak to that, Mary? I mean, we didn't budget to increase it.
We did talk about it. Frankly, I can't remember exactly what we said. Can you? I know we did-
Yeah, I don't remember.
Mark, do you remember what you said?
Yeah, we talked about it for a while.
I mean, I think the reality is that if we had more time for our IT consultant, we probably would get more done, especially in the police department. And Lieutenant Duman, I think, picks up a lot of IT duties and just sort of daily IT duties in the police department and when she really could be spending her time and probably should be spending her time elsewhere. So, I guess that's just a decision for the council on whether they want to go that way or not.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about it. I have to go back and look through my notes and I honestly can't remember. But I agree that we could use an increase, but-
We did go back and forth on that.
Yeah, yeah.
We decided to hold off on-
One thing that will help Sarah this year is having that fifth dispatcher on board because she's lots of time, Lieutenant Duman filling in whenever they have a gap in dispatch coverage and we haven't been up to speed with a complete staff, have we, still?
No.
So, but that will be, they've hired someone, but it takes a long time to train them and get them into the rotation and everything, so. But we certainly can look at it again in the middle of the year. I mean, there will be some fund balance available and-
Right, well, it did, it just seems like it goes, speaks to the whole issue of court competency, right?
Yep.
If we're having other staff do it that don't do it as part of their normal duties or court competency when they, when their attention likely should be elsewhere, then because we don't have that tech support, then that's not necessarily the best use of resources, so, yeah.
Yep. Anyone else? Jen?
Just did a little math here and if we added five hours a week, it would be another $20,000.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a small expense.
But do you think five hours is reasonable? I mean, would that make a big difference?
Um, I think it would make a big difference for Lieutenant Duman, for sure.
Jen?
So, this begs the question, I mean, obviously there are a lot of services that it, that it makes sense to, you know, partner with someone under contract. And maybe you're going to tell me that it certainly makes sense not to have someone on staff that does this, and yet what I'm hearing is that we have someone on staff, Lieutenant Duman, who is doing a lot of this. And then I'm sure there are other people that just do it because it has to be done the way we all troubleshoot computer problems in our daily lives.
Library does a lot of their own stuff too.
Right. You know, is there, and this is just a, more of a philosophical question, but one I think, again, it's the time to ask it at the budget time. You know, should the city be thinking about long-term maybe hiring an IT professional who is a full-time person that is doing this across departments? And I mean, I'm looking at $60,000 that we budget for this for one day a week? I, you know?
Day and a half.
Okay, right.
But, yeah.
But I'm just thinking, you know?
They don't come cheap.
But we're not going to pay some, we're not going to hire someone and probably spend over $100,000 and get them all week long and not have, you know, the, and I'm, I'm just throwing it out there because I know we've-
Well, I, I think, I think it's definitely worth throwing out, especially if, if you take into consideration, as you said, across the board, so if, if it's a-
Bundling.
The library and all, all other city services at the same time, what we would pay, have to pay our full-time professional, though, I'm guessing it would be well over $100,000. Somebody who really knows their IT stuff that could troubleshoot-
A lot of different software.
Across the board, it's a, you'd be paying, you'd be paying a lot, which again, doesn't make it out of the question when you take into account, but I think it's, just recognize that that kind of skill set comes at a premium.
And one thing with the library, they get a fair amount of IT support from the South Central Library System as part of their membership in it, so-
Right.
Which they would belong to anyway, so that's an added factor, but.
Anyone else? Jen?
I mean, I argue that, you know, we could spend a lot of money on IT support, but I think we could also spend a reasonable amount of money and get kind of a mid-level IT support and be able to contract out for those problems that are beyond what that person could do. You know, we've got the expertise of Lieutenant Duman for the PD issues, but then she wouldn't be doing the, I can't get my owl up to work kind of problems, which, I mean, that's not a good use of her time whatsoever. We're spending way too much of her salary on that kind of work. So, I, I think it's something we should explore.
Yeah.
The one thing-
I agree.
One thing advantage of Land Tech we have now is they specialize in, not specialize, but they do, they do a lot of other government clients, so they're, so they have a lot of, they know a lot of these police servers and all that stuff inside and out. So, that's the one advantage right now we have, they are kind of specialized in governmental, so they do a lot of other governmental services, that really helps with that.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, our public safety departments have radio equipment, camera equipment, I mean, things that I would say general IT professionals probably aren't doing a lot of, but, so that is a good point.
Anyone else?
Certainly something to make a note about for next year.
Okay, well, I guess then we'll go into closed session or is there some, are you going to talk about the-
Do you want me to run through personnel real quick?
Yeah, why don't you talk about page parental-
Personnel's on page 40, so.
This budget, again, no major changes from last year. Health insurance for retired persons, this is the sick leave conversion fund. People who retire from the city of Manona are allowed to, or have a benefit of being able to convert their unused sick time up to the maximum amount of hours and use that sick time, convert it to cash to be used for health insurance payments or to go into a 457 retirement plan. So, that's what that budget is for. Wellness program, those are our employee assistance services. That has stayed stable for 2019. Employee awards program, $25,000. That is the merit program for non-represented employees. That is given once a year. And department heads make recommendations for their employees for merit payments and then the mayor adjusts and improves those payments.
We've had that program for a number of years, haven't we?
We have, yep.
It doesn't show previous years.
Yeah, previous years we were allocated to each individual salaries, it's still like, so this year I decided to allocate it to this account, so it's just a way to change the, we've always went to the full amount or close to the full amount.
And I think I mentioned this last year, and I know we don't have any say as a council, but I'd be interested in who, I think last year we talked about the process a little bit more and interested in who is receiving it, just to know that, you know, they're getting a nice pat on the back or whatever. It'd be neat to know what employees are kind of going above and beyond.
Well, and this has been an issue that, actually, I had hoped to spend more time on this year and the last three or four months have been so nuts. We did do a survey of other communities to see what kind of benefits and award programs they did, and then we were going to talk, we did that partially as the, part of the discussion of this parental leave thing. Basically, I think what's happened in the past for, and it happened again this past year because I didn't even know about it until like November that I needed to make these decisions, that we, pretty much everybody got something. And it was based-
Oh, okay.
There was sort of a range. We talked about it because I discovered the library hadn't been considered eligible, so we added a little extra money to cover them and, and it was pretty much everyone got something, I think, for the most part. And it varied by department heads. I know Dan did not always recommend something for all of his staff, but other department heads, and, and some departments only have one or two people, you know, I mean, it just varies.
Gotcha.
So, I would like to do this year a little more targeted and, and I would like to especially do something for the public works people and the department heads who spent so much time on the flooding, I think, that definitely. So, I have, I've been thinking about that. I don't know if we never necessarily need that entire amount. April had set up some parameters based on salary and, but I'm certainly would be willing to, I don't think those are hard and fast rules that I have to follow or-
Yeah, and I certainly wasn't questioning the rules or-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just a-
It's just nice to know who we're, we're rewarding for kind of above and beyond.
Yeah, yeah, and basically everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
In the past, has been, so. But this amount of money could pay for another 0.25% pay increase for everybody. Mark, isn't it about, every quarter percent was about 25,000 or 20,000? Added to the budget, so. Do we want to just do away with it and do that? I mean, it's just a, it's complicated because there's people who don't really have an opportunity to do anything real unusual in their position, but they do a great job all the time. So, you know, to just single out people who were involved in some unusual situation each year, that, that's kind of hard too. Then that doesn't seem really fair to others. It's, yeah, so. That's where it stands. Still up in the air. Anyone else? Okay.
So, where is the paid parental leave?
That is page 148. Mark set that up as a separate.
Yep. It's a separate one altogether.
This is Alder Kitzler's baby. Leah, do you want to talk about it a little bit or-
Do you want me to talk about it, Mark?
Or Mark, whoever.
Either.
So, Alder Kitzler has proposed that we look at a paid parental leave policy for our employees that would provide them two weeks of paid leave for the birth or adoption of a new child into their family. And the two weeks of paid leave would be, it would run concurrent with family medical leave, so it wouldn't be in addition to family medical leave, but it would allow them to be paid 100% of their current salary during those two weeks of leave, so they wouldn't have to take it unpaid, which family medical leave is technically unpaid, or you have to use your existing paid leave time, so they wouldn't have to deplete their paid leave time balances for the birth or adoption of a child. So, the proposal is to initially fund this program with a $30,000 transfer from the general fund to establish the fund and then make an allocation each year in the operating budget into the fund.
It's a small allocation for this year, it's just kind of a start, it's kind of a test for the first year what it's going to be, and we looked at a bunch of numbers, just kind of start, and this might be kind of low, but we started with the 3,400 for this first year, and it's just the overtime. So, like myself, if I had a son, I don't really need, I mean, my position doesn't require overtime, so wouldn't it fall on this? It's more going to be like public safety or some other departments that are more driven by, you know, overtime categories.
Yeah, we wouldn't see really any out-of-pocket costs for non-represented employees who get two weeks of paid leave because they're not eligible to be paid overtime. So, they just wouldn't be using their paid leave time, but we wouldn't be paying them extra, if that makes sense. Police officers, firefighters, anyone who's an hourly employee who earns overtime, we would have to use this fund to pay the overtime to cover their shifts while they're on paid leave. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And we went back and forth. I, I know, having experienced myself, there's a big need for what we were calling paid family leave, I guess, as opposed to parental leave for like elderly parents, sick kids, that kind of thing. That is much harder to come up with a policy for, so, which is why I just decided, because this, you have a child, you get two weeks, that's it. You have an aging parent in a nursing home and we can restrict the child leave to like you have to take it in one week increments or whatever, but if you have somebody in a nursing home, say, and you're going like one day every other week, you know, it's just much harder to come up with a policy for that. So, we, my decision was to start with this, and I know, Andy, we had originally talked about four weeks, I think, what's some period doing six or something? But I, once we looked at all these other numbers, I decided to cut it back to two for a start and we'll see how it goes. And the 30,000 is actually coming out of the fund balance, right?
Correct.
Just so we have something to cover if we go over, whatever, but we really, we still have to write a policy and-
So, the policy would have to come back here through the council first, so this is kind of the seed money for that, so.
So, this is just kind of a foot in the door experiment. Jen?
So, just to clarify, and I'm sorry, I'm sure you just said this, but I just, once I figured out what you were talking about with overtime, then I wasn't clear, does this fund pay for the extra expenses to departments as well of overtime or is it only compensating the employee who is taking parental leave?
No, the fund will pay for the extra expenses, so the overtime expenses, that's what the fund's for.
Okay.
The employee will just be compensated with their salary if they're a non-represented employee who just gets a salary.
Okay. And they won't have to use their other leave time-
Correct.
To do that.
Correct, yeah.
And just a bit of background, the way we got these numbers was following the similar fashion of Dane County, how they got their numbers, so I worked really closely with somebody from that office and we looked at the last 10 years of FMLA leave. So, I, we were able to break it down in very kind of elementary terms of, you know, baby leave, I'll say, and then paid family care or family care leave. And we do have a number of employees, you know, kind of getting to Mary's point, we have far more employees that take paid, or take FMLA for family care than we do for babies. And so, this is, you know, one way to get a step in the door and obviously, you know, I think we'd all like it to be a little bit more. And eventually, hopefully after this year, seeing how it goes, we'll be able to add maybe the care aspect to it as well and maybe add a little bit more baby. But we did go into it looking at the full last 10 years and this is kind of where we're getting these dollar amounts when we look at all the salaries of everybody that's taken it and kind of disperse that through 10 years. So, that was the best way we were able to do it and that was the way Dane County was actually able to do it as well.
It's also a marketing tool for hiring process in the near future, so there's that part.
It's getting to be a more and more common, especially in govern, in private business, but I think in, in government too. Alder Kitzler did a lot of work on looking at numbers and research and-
So, first of all, I want to, I want to thank you, Alder Kitzler, and, and the mayor and everybody else that's looked into this, because I think it is important. However, I am struggling with the notion of only carving out for parental leave and not for anything else. And frankly, I think if we're going to dive in to this type of policy, that we ought to be diving into the policy where it's going to be most helpful. And, and frankly, it just even strikes me as a little bit sort of discriminatory where, you know, if you have kids, you get the, you, you get, you know, you're taken care of, but if you don't have kids, you know, and, and your, your needs are somewhere else, it doesn't matter. So, it seems like if we're going to take, if we're going to dive into this, that it would make sense to dive into the, where it's most, most helpful, recognizing that it would, will undoubtedly mean that we would need additional dollars set aside to do that. Yeah.
Just to give you a little bit of a perspective, so if we did four weeks of paid parental leave and two weeks of paid care, that'd be approximately $13,500 additional, or not additional, but total every year. So, you're looking about another $10,000 a year.
Right.
So, just, and I have obviously a spreadsheet with a lot of different manipulations of that cell.
Right.
Just to give you a perspective.
Right.
Part, part of the issue is just coming up with the policy and how we would implement it for the paid parental leave. And I'm not saying I, we don't want that eventually.
Right.
We're just starting. And it isn't that people don't have leave that they can take for that kind of thing. And we also are very accommodating of people if they don't have-
They can take leave, but it's not paid leave.
Pardon?
I said they can take leave, but they don't have paid leave, correct?
Well, we, I don't think we've ever had anybody not be paid, have we?
Family medical leave is, is unpaid leave. However, you can substitute your paid time off so that you're paid while you're on family medical leave.
Your sick leave or whatever.
So, you can substitute your sick time, you can substitute your vacation time.
Yeah.
And we allow employees to accumulate, depending on their start date, anywhere up to 85 to 105 days of sick leave can be accumulated, so.
Yeah, we've toyed with different ideas of doing it. We've- We've toyed with increasing the amount, number of hours they can accumulate, because that's also tied in with how much we pay out for health insurance after they retire, so some of these things have very long-reaching impacts, others don't as much.
Well, if we provide that flexibility for, for family, could we not start by providing that same amount of flexibility around parental? I mean, essentially in the same.
We do provide that for parental flexibility. In terms of taking time off, we do. Yeah, right.
But they have to use their own leave, right?
Right, right, but we do, it's not that they have taken, I don't think anybody's taken.
Yeah, I've never had anyone had to take unpaid.
Without any pay, correct?
Family medical leave.
So, they, because how much, do they get a day of sick leave a month?
Correct.
And, you know, a few weeks vacation too, and the idea's always been that you would use the sick leave for parental leave or child leave or whatever.
Okay.
It's typically what people do. This is kind of a new thing.
Okay, so this is, so we're flexible across the board right now, but we're still only wanting to add the parental piece.
For now, we're just doing the child, the baby leave to start with, yes. Partly because it's going to take us a while to put together a policy to cover the other, the parent, the child, baby leave would be much easier to do. Chad?
What I've heard tonight is that, because I share these concerns, but the thing that I heard that I think is compelling is that it sounds like there are, it's much more complicated legally to, to have the program and release the funds for things other than a dependent child. That's what I heard. Is that accurate, or?
I don't know if even legally would be the word, it's just much more complicated to come up with a policy.
It's a much more complicated policy when you're talking about taking care of sick family members. You know, family medical leave has all sorts of physician certifications and things like that, I mean, you, you can have someone who has maybe a chronic condition, or maybe who just gets migraines, and things like that can be really hard policy-wise to control in terms, so if we're talking about paying people and not having them use their own sick leave, that's a policy that's going to be pretty tricky to write.
Okay. I mean, I guess where I'm coming at here is that I'm happy that we're allocating the funds, and I think it's in the spirit of doing better by our staff, which I think we all agree is good. And it's, I also heard it said that the policy itself will come before us later, so, you know, we have to start with money.
We're starting somewhere.
Right, you know, it, it's always a chicken and egg thing, but you got to put money somewhere to, to have a policy. And then the policy, we may find that through the process of writing the policy, that we can have a more expansive policy, but it's, I think what I'm hearing is right now, that would be harder to do, and I would certainly rather us to do something than nothing.
That was my idea, I'm not saying we will never consider the other kind, we're just starting with this, and I, I'm assuming over the next year or two, we will be looking further into the other. But it's just, the more you get into it, you have to follow all these federal rules too, and, and we have had people take advantage of the regular sick leave time. Not saying we're planning on everybody taking advantage of it, but that does happen, so we have to make sure we have some restrictions put in for that. Obviously, you know when somebody or their wife, child has had, or wife has had a baby, that's pretty obvious, you know, but there's other thing, times where people have kind of gamed the system, so we have to be sure we've got some ways of checking that, and FMLA, this would be in accordance with FMLA guidelines, it would have to be, wouldn't it, to, which are given by the federal government? So there's just a, we need more time to explore, expanding it further, so.
I, I just want to say, I mean, I think this is great. I am proud.
Thank you, well, hopefully it's a start anyway.
All of you, all of you involved in this, it makes us proud.
If you want to put in more money, but we still will not be implementing it until we have a policy, and we don't really have a whole lot of extra money, so.
Right, well, I guess, I guess I would say to the point of it being more complicated, there's no doubt in my mind it would be more complicated. On the other hand, I'm extremely confident that we would not be inventing the wheel here, that there's all kinds of other entities that have already created policy, it shouldn't be that difficult to write the policy.
A lot of them are private businesses as opposed to public and, you know.
Right, right. But I'm sure that there are models out there that would, that would be fairly, fairly easy to integrate, and I, again, I just, you know, I, I support the effort, I just, to me, it just seems like it would make sense, again, to be trying to go after the thing that's going to be most beneficial, even if it costs us $10,000 more, than to be doing the thing that is going to be of least benefit to people. And as somebody who took care of two aging parents before they passed, et cetera, I can appreciate that that's where a lot of people are at these days, not to mention siblings and other things, so.
Molly?
Just very briefly, in the spirit of redundancy, I want to say I appreciate all the work that's gone into this by Alder Kitzler, and I do think that, I, I just feel hopeful that through continued dialogues such as these, we can really realize the full vision and scope that he had intended when he proposed this policy. So I look forward to keeping the, the lines of communication open on it.
Thank you. Anyone else, Andy?
Also redundance. Thank you to Leah for all of her work on it, certainly Mark, and then the mayor. I mean, we've spent hours on end kind of working through all of this detail, so thanks, and we'll see where it goes.
It seems real simple when you start out, but you start talking about it.
And a lot of questions have been asked, and we've asked in those meetings too, gone back and forth, so it's, it's been a process.
Okay, anything else for personnel? So is there a motion to go into closed session? We have one, I guess I better read it. Convene in closed session under Wisconsin statute section 19.85, friend one, friend C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This concerns performance evaluations, revised job descriptions, and salary adjustments.
I'll move, we go into closed session?
Second. Is there a second? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder White?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Kerr?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Okay. I guess we are on to Public Works. Actually, well, we're just about at the end of your allotted time, Dan, so.
Yeah, so I'm done. Are you done?
We're on our usual schedule, yeah.
Okay.
So Dan has, has an employee, so we're just going to talk about having utilities, because that's what we're expecting, so it's not a challenge at all.
Oh, okay.
So first page of the, first one to general buildings on page.
Excuse me, Tony, is that coffee?
Yes, there's, uh.
If anybody wants to eat coffee.
She is a god. First dessert, now coffee.
Thank you, Tony.
Okay, sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Do you need coffee, Dan?
No, I'm good. When you came in tonight, I had some garbage and recycle information on the table in front of you, and I also had my DPW operational budget highlights. I, I prepare that every year, and I, I go through all of my budgets and kind of pick the ones where there's more of a significant line item increase, just because of the sheer number of line items that I have in my budgets, but just because it's not listed on this sheet, if you have questions about something, please just let me know, and I'll be more than half to answer your questions, but, so we'll, we'll start in the general buildings and plant budget, and.
Which is page 80.
I don't have those, yeah, so.
I think.
I just got.
No, 54.
54? Oh, well, I'm wrong then. Oh, well.
Will had talked about this earlier when he was presenting, our gas and electric increases by $6,000, which is the 10% of library power allocated rate for this room, so this is the budget line item where that appears. Prior to that coming over, that, that line item remained the same.
Just one thing, and we talk about this, this line item, I don't know if you're aware of, after the wear-up is solar panels are falling, which goes into account, and I believe that contract is up next year, so this will be something.
I think so.
We'll have to look at here in the future, but it will affect these accounts.
The next item that we have is for telephone, and that line item is decreasing by $1,000, and that's based on use. The outside services account, this is one that needs a little more detail for you. This is new that I'm requesting for this budget, is to, to add $15,000 to complete cleaning at City Hall. And when we brought Matt on board, starting in January of 2018, prior to him arriving, we sat down, meaning me, Jake, Wally, Leah, and we, we wanted to get the, the job description tuned up a little bit better than what it was, and we refocused the job description on, on building maintenance, upkeep of the facilities and grounds. We put an emphasis on, on structures and landscaping versus the cleaning, and the cleaning at City Hall is, is what's suffering. We do have the first shift and second shift facility maintenance guys where that is part of their duties is to complete the cleaning at the community center and City Hall, but the City Hall administration wing and the PD wing and the bathrooms doesn't receive the attention it, it once did, but we are picking up more of the duties as it relates to the structures in, in the outside areas.
You've had a lot more repairs and things that he's taken care of, haven't you?
Yeah, and that, the next item, we'll get into that shortly, but mainly the HVAC systems, roof leaks, gutters, doors, there are so many things that just seem to be popping up that, that requires more of Matt's attention than janitorial-type duties.
So were those things not, not being done, or they, these are just before?
Regarding the building stuff related to HVAC, I think the previous person relied more on the contracted service provider.
Okay.
But there was some lack of communication going on there where, where there was no follow-up to maintenance items. Matt's attention is now focused on all of our contractors, and he's got a good system down now where no matter who comes here, there's a follow-up action, and there is a component or, or a part of his duty now that he is doing some of the work personally, having a contractor do the work.
Okay.
But like I said, the, the flip side of that is he's not doing as many rounds through the, the buildings for janitorial. So the option there, if City Council approves this, is we have to determine yet if we're going to hire a part-time person to do the cleaning, or if we're going to hire a, a cleaning service. We've checked in both, we're not really quite sure where we're going to get the best bang for our buck yet, but we do feel that 15,000, a few hours a week, roughly four to six hours a week would be enough to, to the best of the budget.
The next item is the repair and maintenance services, and that increases by $8,000, and that's, that's to take your City Hall alone. It seems that the, the number of roof needs that we've had this year alone are more than double from what we had last year. The HVAC needs, and then the fire department, the fire department has seen an increase in, in maintenance needs for their HVAC systems. So there's, there's more things that are requiring dollars to fix.
What's the story with the roof? Is that, does the roof need replacing, or is there a reason? I, I'm just curious, or how old is the roof?
The, the one that we just found last week, they're, they're on the flashing.
So basically, the, we're having the contractor check the areas around the flashing, they just need to be resealed.
Okay.
There was a, the one that we found last week was outside of where Brad and Leah's offices are, there's the, the private residence right there, there were trees that were rubbing against City Hall, and one of the branches just rubbed a hole into the roof, so that's our latest repair.
Okay.
But whether it's HVAC, roof, gutters, garage doors, it just seems like it's, it's increasing, and we have to have the money to pay for the services. It's, it's pretty much all stuff we're hiring out for contracted, contracted work. So if there's any other questions for the general buildings and plant, I'd.
Just one, one other comment, and the library already uses outside services for cleaning, might be, and I know in their, in their budget, if they lump all their outside contracts together, so you can't really tell what, how much they're paying for the cleaning service.
Right.
And obviously, this building is bigger and has a lot more traffic to it.
We do have a separate bill for the janitor service, it's $2,023, I believe, per month.
For the library?
Twenty, so about 24. Right, yeah, okay.
Aw, then you can pull that out of your hand like that. The bills that get paid, you can just whip right.
Yeah.
Page, page 80 starts the Public Works, kind of the, this one, just, just kind of the recap on this, before Dan starts. Public Works total recap, which includes the items listed there, I mean, the funds listed there. As you'll see, the personnel one, there is a decrease, and this is because of Jeff Johnson that we kind of talked about, and this is where it shows up, just, so just, that's an FYI. Okay, moving on, the highway, street administration budget, there are no significant changes for this. Mark talked about the salaries for that, that budget, but the next item would be the shop machinery and buildings account.
Can you, can you tell us what page number?
82.
82.
82?
Yep.
Okay, for this, this budget, we have the water and sewer utilities increasing by $1,515, and that's basically to account for annual rate increases for the water and sewer utilities. The garage material and supply account increases by 1,500, and that accounts for contract increases for the fire alarm monitoring system, and then we have backflow preventers there, so that's for the annual backflow preventer testing to outside services. Are there any questions for the shop machinery and buildings budget? Okay. The next budget would be the Public Works administration budget, which is formerly the engineering budget. I think Mark and I decided to give it a new title to represent Public Works a little better. Aside from that, I don't have any, any significant changes. I think the actual expense line items pretty much remain the same on that budget.
Any questions about that one? I guess not.
Okay. The next one would be the street maintenance and construction. Mark, do you have a page number for that? Page 84. The first item there is the median and terrace maintenance, that will increase by $5,000, and that's going to be to account for contracted landscaping assistance on the, at the Manona Drive block walls. This is for a one-time spring cleanup at nine, for nine areas on Manona Drive, and it's basically to help our part-timers get going in their summer. We have one person dedicated to maintaining the block walls, and then we have two people dedicated to mowing the medians on Manona Drive and Broadway. Barnes provided us a price proposal for this work, and in late April, early May is, is when the work would be done, they would go around and spruce up the, the nine high, the high, you know, the more high visible block walls, get them ready to go. That way, it, it helps our part-time landscaper, otherwise we're falling behind with maintaining those block walls in summer.
Are those the street signs, or is it more of a, the retaining walls of different?
No, they're, they're the intersection block wall landscaping signs.
No, it says the street name on those big stones.
Yeah, yeah. We have, I believe, a total of 22 areas on Manona Drive and.
We have, I believe, a total of twenty-two areas on Manona Drive and there are six locations, but nine, nine areas for landscaping. The next item would be the street equipment maintenance and repair line item. That increases by nine hundred fifty dollars and that basically, basically accounting for increased vehicle maintenance costs and that's for all city fleet, not just the Public Works vehicles. Next line item would be fuels and additives. That increases by one thousand five hundred dollars and that's to account for rising fuel costs and that is for Public Works vehicles. And the last item for that budget would be the snow and ice supplies, which increases by three thousand two hundred forty-five dollars. And that accounts for the salt purchase increase for 2019. We contract with the state for our salt purchase.
Any questions? Nancy, did you have?
No.
What's the next page for the road-related facilities?
The first item there, the street lighting utilities, that's our, the account that we pay MGE for powering up our streetlights. Any streetlights that get hit or need replacement, that also comes out of that line item. The next line item would be the traffic control maintenance that is decreasing by four thousand dollars. Traffic control maintenance is for the City of Madison. We contract with the City of Madison to maintain all of our traffic lights in Manona. So whenever they come out and do maintenance, we get billed for it, but recently we have not been meeting the amount we have budgeted, so we're just gonna decrease it until we need to raise it back up.
So they bill us on an as needed or pay as you go kind of basis?
Yep. We do have, we do have a contract with them for the responsibility, but as things go down or as a complaint comes in for an item not working, they're dispatched out and then they just send us a bill, so.
Dan?
Yep.
Are the intersections that are right on the border, are those cost split or how does that work?
We do have cost splits. WPS, I believe, is their own, the Cold Spring is paid for by the high school. That's not a city one.
Okay.
All the other ones are city. I'd have to double-check at Frazier.
But you know, an intersection like Cottage Grove and Manona Drive where, you know, it's half Manona, it's right on the city thing. You know, that's an intersection that serves the two cities.
Right, and we split, there's line items in the contract for fifty-fifty.
Okay.
The streetlights north of Cold Spring, Madison maintains for us as well. So there's, between MGE and City of Madison, all of our traffic lights and streetlights are divvied up, but it's kind of complicated where the borders are. I have a highlighted map for all that, so, but, yes.
Anyone else?
Forestry is on page ninety-two, it's the last of the general forms.
Okay, in this budget, we have tree removal and care decreasing by four thousand five hundred and that's based on need. Going into 2018, we did raise that up thinking we'd have more, more of a demand to eliminate some of the ash trees out there. They, I guess the demand to remove them didn't increase. So I think we feel comfortable bringing that number back down to fifteen thousand. I know the Public Works Committee raised a question about that, but if we see a rise in 2019, then we'll plan to increase that again for 2020, so.
Anyone? Is that intern done with the survey, the forestry survey?
I believe she wrapped, either wrapped it up last week or she's finalizing it now. The past few times she's been in, she's been on the computer doing database work.
Oh, okay.
I believe her field work is done.
Okay.
But we did, we did plan for that to take the full year of 2018, so.
So we still have some time allotted for her to finish?
Yep.
Okay. Jen?
Will we get a copy of that or is that a minute she might come to Public Works or council meeting to kind of talk about?
We can definitely make, I'm not, Brad is leading that. I'll talk to Brad and see what kind of end product that we can bring forward. But there definitely can be something presented to City Council for that.
That'd be good.
As well as Public Works Committee.
I just think it's an important report and it's gonna impact a lot of the decisions we make.
Right.
Down the road.
Right, yep, we can make that happen.
Anyone else?
One more item for the forestry. Half of our brush collection expense is in this account. And based on the contract, that will increase by one thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars for the forestry budget.
Jen?
I'm just curious, we're now into, fall into brush collection for the year, have we gotten any complaints?
It's, it's been so smooth. You know, I think we had less than a handful going into the first round of chipping. Anything that they've missed, we forwarded on. There's been no issue with them going back and chipping. I don't believe we had any issues with brush piles exceeding the limit. And this has been a phenomenal year for brush collection. And the relationship is working out pretty good with Barnes, so.
That's good. Anything else? Molly?
I know, I don't know if now is the appropriate time, but I know that there have been concerns about the large brush that needs to be hauled to Madison and sort of the conflict that happens as a Manona resident dropping off a bigger brush. Are there any future plans to figure out a way to have a spot in Manona where those larger are not able to be picked up?
Yeah, there are options. It's gonna be up to City Council and Public Works Committee whether we modify our current yard waste drop-off. We did look at that internally, Jeff and I, in early 2018 to see if we could modify our current drop-off area, if we could expand it more into the yard. An unpopular option might be eliminating the dog park where it's at and moving a fully functional yard waste collection site to that corner. That would have to be a DNR certified site. And it could be a, it could be yard waste drop-off, it could be a brush drop-off, a more full-service yard waste site, similar to what Mafarone has. But we do have options, it's just, are we ready to do it? I think if, as we proceed in years, depending on what the contract is for brush collection, there might be a cutoff point where we really entertain doing it, having our own site versus contracting it out. So we're not there yet, but we'll have to look at it.
Thanks, Jim.
Anyone else? Okay.
Do you mind, before we get into the, there's one more solid waste, which will kind of start in order from, this goes on the levy, so I didn't want to do this one first, and it kind of goes in there page-wise, one sixty-one, and we can kind of go from there down because it follows an order after that.
I did hand out our current year summary for trash and recycle collection. That's the big colored spreadsheet. The page that sits on top of that is more for your informational purposes. I thought you might want to see what our annual totals are or have been, basically since 2011 through last year. So you have that to take a peek at. But for the solid waste and recycle account, I do have some changes that I need to touch on. And if you look on that spreadsheet, it basically refers to the green highlighted items.
Just before you started, these are changes that you just recently started talking about.
Right. So what, what you have in the budget, there are two lines that I am proposing to increase because I've seen an uptick in our numbers since the month of May. And we started preparing for the operating budget back in July already, so the spreadsheet that I did planning for 2019 back then, we've had some changes. And it's up to council if we want to make those changes or if we just want to ride it out and see how it goes. But the solid waste disposal budget, my rebate, I'm decreasing by five thousand. That's based on market rate in our tonnage history. Right now, the market's down for the recyclable commodities that we sell and those fluctuate nationally. The recycle service, planning for that, based on the contract, increased by one thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars. And that's based basically off the number of stops, number of carts we have out there. Refuse collection increases by one thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and that's based on contract as well. Now, the next item, the refuse tipping fees, the budget that you currently have in front of you, I have increasing by four thousand eight dollars based on contract pricing. Now, with the uptick that we've seen in the tonnage collected for our solid waste, that price, I believe, should be adjusted to one hundred seven thousand five hundred five dollars.
Can you say that again?
The tipping fees?
Right, it's the-
The ninety-one thousand?
Yep, so the ninety-one thousand eight thirty-three, I believe, should be increased up to one hundred seven thousand five hundred five dollars. That is quite a jump.
Yeah.
So if you, if you take those numbers, the two, starting with the month of May, two hundred fifteen tons. In June, one hundred sixty-nine tons, July, one hundred seventy-six tons, and August, one hundred seventy-nine tons. That's quite a jump from the previous four months of 2018.
How does it compare to 2017, do you know?
They're higher. If you look at the sheet that was stapled to-
Oh, okay.
The front of that, you can see the tonnage difference. So we had one thousand eight hundred ninety-five tons total. I don't have the calculator in front of me to divide that by twelve, but so if we take those higher numbers, we're gonna be taking in two thousand two hundred twenty-five tons of trash and I plan for nineteen hundred tons. We could stick with nineteen hundred, but we have a risk of being underfunded in that line item.
So is the, I mean, there seems to be seasonal fluctuation or is it just an uptick? I mean, I see that it goes up in May, but does it normally go up in May or is that abnormal?
There are fluctuations throughout the year and you see an uptick usually in spring through summer. Is this the economy? You know, with people buying more stuff, getting rid of more stuff, I don't know. We've added a number of stops, seven stops, but that should not increase the tonnage, you know, significantly at all.
I guess this doesn't, this wouldn't show the impact of flood damage, you know, and the fact that people would be putting stuff out by the curb.
No.
Which would hit us in September.
And our bulk waste collection numbers have remained pretty static. That's at the bottom, the bottom line of that spreadsheet. You can see our monthly bulk tonnage. I just wanted to raise, you know, raise this to you, make you aware of it, that if these numbers continue and we keep the same number that I initially submitted back in July and August, we could be underfunded for 2019. And then the second one would be the very next item, the recycle tipping, which is the processing fees. I initially have that as decreasing by one thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. But with the, with the increase here, based on data from the last four months, that fee should be increasing by one thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and the line item should be forty-two thousand five eighty-eight. So where you see the thirty-nine thousand four sixteen, I believe that should be forty-two thousand five eighty-eight. It could go down the remainder of the year, but we've seen four months of increased tonnage. I don't know if it'll go down, but I just want to make you aware of it.
And you've been working with them and they haven't given an explanation for that?
The explanation I received was it- And I get, I get all the weight tickets every month. I get, it's a half inch thick of weight tickets that we get from advanced disposal. You know, I was asking, are you, are you putting recycles in our solid waste? Are you emptying the trucks at the end of the day? Are we starting off fresh with an empty truck? Are we getting tonnage from another community? They said no to all of that. You know, why, why did we see an uptick in our tonnage? One month, maybe, yes, and drops back down, but we've had four months of higher tonnage collection. And like I said, we do get the tonnage reports. We get the weight tickets for every truck that goes to the weigh scale at the landfill. Don't have an answer other than it's showing up.
I guess I'd be interested in seeing the numbers for 2017 and 2016.
I can email all that to you tomorrow.
For each month.
Yep, yep. The spreadsheet that you see right here, I do this every year and I create a final PDF.
Okay.
I'll email that to everybody tomorrow.
Okay.
So what are your, your revised hundred and seven thousand, how many tons would that be?
That would be for two thousand two hundred twenty-five tons projected for 2019.
Two thousand?
Two hundred and twenty-five. That would be trash tonnage and then they have what's called residue.
Right.
Tonnage, so there's a certain portion of recycle that is rejected, that's added to our trash, so the total, let's see, total trash tonnage plus residue for next year, I have twenty-two fifty. So that, that's what we would be looking at, is two thousand two hundred fifty total projected trash tonnage.
And this is, we're using this, so that, I mean, that would be a alarming, I mean surprising.
Yeah.
Huge change for, it's been right around between, you know, eighteen to nineteen hundred for the last four years and was lower, even slightly lower than that before.
Yep. We had an uptick in 2014.
Yeah.
Down, keeping up in sixteen again.
Like fifty tons of, no.
But if you look at 2012, we had one thousand six hundred thirty tons and then last year, we're up to eighteen ninety-five. So I mean, there are, you know, in 2012, we're coming off the recession. I don't know if people are just spending more, generating more trash. I mean, that, that's the only thing that I guess we can come to a conclusion on is we're generating more trash.
Jen, did you?
I'm just wondering if there's other communities in the area that use advanced disposal as well that we might be able to contact to see if they've noticed a similar increase? You know, if it's, if it's something internally within advanced disposal or if it's something like just consumerism that's changed. I mean, I would expect that to change, being counted wide as opposed to just Manona.
Right, I could look on the webs, their webpage to find out if there are communities that have advanced disposal.
I mean, I don't know if you've got other contacts with-
Yeah, if there are people I can contact, yep.
Well, and to Jennifer's point, even if they didn't use advanced disposal, if they're seeing their tonnage go up regardless of who they use.
Right.
You know, then that, that might help us answer it too, but.
Yeah, we'll check into that.
How much total of an increase are you, to cover all these things, are you talking?
So it'd be nineteen thousand six hundred eighty dollars plus one thousand two seventy-eight. Just under twenty-one thousand dollars, I believe, in that ballpark, twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-nine five eight.
I was close. I'm not a math guy, so.
You're right.
Should've used longhand.
Maybe they're putting their brush in the garbage can.
That would be a big violation.
Right, but I'm just, I mean, right, we've restricted the amount of brush. I mean, it just, it-
You know, I think if they, if, that would be fairly light if you think that. Maybe there's more home repairs going on and they're putting-
Yeah.
Construction waste.
Construction waste in their home cart. You know, you can smash a toilet and fit a toilet in there pretty good.
Right.
I know, I don't wanna... But there are things they can do, and if they...
Sure.
Break it down over a four-week period to get a full cart. Some of those carts are ninety-five gallon carts, and you can fit a lot of waste in there.
Right, right.
So, that could be it, that could be it too.
I mean, the spreadsheet is helpful, because I was actually gonna ask, because I know some of my neighbors often say we should have every week recycling, and when you could go down to every other for trash. I know that's true for my family, but it's obviously not true for Minota when you look at this. But I don't know if you've ever had any requests for having recycling go to every week?
I think in the last year, we might have had one.
We talked about this.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we have talked about it.
I know in...
I'd like to submit a request for recycling every week.
If my math is right, by just adding up all eight months so far, and then parading that out over a year, I, I'm only, I'm coming up with eighteen hundred and sixty-seven tons.
What I did, Doug, is I took those four months, and I averaged that out over twelve months with the, with those totals.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't include the previous four months in these different numbers.
Right.
So, I'm thinking worst, worst case, when I, when I put that out there.
Yeah, okay.
What about you, Andrew, I don't, to me, I think trash is, people are less and less using trash than using recycle. That's why it's baffling what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is shocking.
Yeah.
Jen?
It's not riverfront related, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't have apartment or anything.
Those would all be private contract anyway, those new numbers.
Jen?
I just would argue that if we figure out what the issue is, maybe this is a good opportunity for a public education campaign on the fact that, you know, the more you put in your garbage, the more it costs the city, so it turns out it costs more to the taxpayer. I don't think people really grasp that, that you throw it away and it just goes away, that there's actually a cost that you're...
Yeah, that's true. Nancy?
Yeah, I just wanna echo that. I was just gonna say, the sustainability committee, or has it, I've actually, well, so the committee actually have talked about the whole idea of just putting together a flyer for, that would automatically go out, like, to everybody that gets a building permit, as an example, that would have a list of all the places that you can recycle your building materials, including restore and whatever, and then, you know, and that could be expanded where conceivably, you know, it'd be too much for the bottom of a water bill, but something that the city would mail out to encourage people, exactly as Jennifer is saying, you know, it would be a couple of lot cheaper to do a mailing.
Right.
Give people the resources to know where to recycle, or where to take their
Sure.
construction waste, or where to take their brush again, or whatever, than it would be to be paying this kind of bill. You know, this kind of uptick.
I think that would be a good thing for sustainability, sustainability to be doing. Anything else, Molly?
Well, I think, you know, Janet and Nancy's points are, are great, and I think in line with that, it doesn't seem like the recycle residue is a huge issue, but I wonder if people need reminders too about what is acceptable to recycle and how that works, and I mean, to have that included in sort of this education process would be very useful.
Yep.
We used to get mailings occasionally from, oh, Clean Sweep, and, you know, listing all those kind of things.
I'm not who sent those up, or not sure who sent those up.
I don't know if the county did, or, I know we've always just kinda hung on to one, and, well, now you can look online too, but we could include all that kind of information.
Right. Someone, some of you mentioned increasing our recycle service, so if you wanna go to every week, you basically double, double the charge. I know where, where I'm at in McFarland, they went to that this year, every week recycling, so...
Do they do their regular garbage every week also?
Is there any cost savings to drop down garbage?
I don't know if you'd wanna do that.
Yeah, the issue is smell, we talked about this in committee, you know, it's...
Okay.
Yeah.
Because in the middle of July...
True.
Before I move on, on that first page, on that, that small page that's stapled to the spreadsheet, if you look at the very last sentence where it says annual cost per stop, the, the far right number in twenty seventeen, the homeowner paid ninety-five dollars for garbage recycling last year. That's a pretty good number. You look back to twenty eleven and twenty ten, before we went to automated solid waste, the average cost for a homeowner back then was just under one hundred twenty-five dollars. So with our contract, and what, what really kinda makes this happen is that rebate that we receive, so that kinda, you know, we're, we're getting paid to recycle materials, and, and that helps you, the homeowner, pay less for your garbage and recycling service, so that's a, that's a key number for you. And if you look on that spreadsheet, you'll see the monthly cost. Like, January, you paid seven dollars eighty-six cents that month for garbage and recycle collection. In August, you paid nine dollars. So that's real, real data for you folks, that you can really see what you pay, so...
And I think that's a perfect example of something that should go on WVMO.
Yeah.
People need to know what their, you know, worth saving the money.
Right, yep.
It's a dollar eighty-two per s, per week.
What's that?
It's a dollar eighty-two per week.
Not bad.
No.
Considering if you can get rid of ninety-five gallons of garbage and ninety-five gallons, or sixty-five gallons of recycle.
But not heavy stuff, please.
Yeah, right.
So anyway, the, the last item for the solid waste budget, I have on there a recycle cart purchase, a one-time fee for next year of six thousand dollars. We have a list generated already for people who have sixty-five in thirty-two gallon carts, they wanna go up to the ninety-five gallon. Probably about every third year, fourth year, we, we have enough requests to buy another allotment of carts, so the six grand would get us fifty or fifty-two carts, plus freight, so... That'd be the last item I have for solid waste disposal.
Now, do they, sorry, do they pay for those, or, I always thought that if you needed a new one, you pay for it?
You do. If they are damaged, as a result of putting them in the street, the property owner will pay that, that cost. If advanced disposal breaks a cart, or, or does something to damage the cart, they pay for that. Over the past six years, I think they've had to buy like three carts, or something like that. A new home, they will pay sixty-five dollars for each cart. But if they wanna upsize from a sixty-five to a ninety-five, they don't have to pay for that. And we do, we do have lids we replace and wheels, so if you guys get calls for broken lids or wheels, we can fix those.
What do we do with the old carts?
We do recycle the old carts that, mainly the thirty-two gallons carts, because nobody wants those anymore.
No.
Those have been recycled. Basically melted back down and made into garbage carts, so... So that'd be it for the solid waste budget, must be more questions?
Thanks for all the data.
So next starts the three utilities, both in order, I mean, the book, it goes slow water, water, then sewer. I don't know if you wanna talk about systems utilities, do you wanna start on the new person, or you just wanna go through the budget first and then talk about that?
I'm sorry, did you repeat that, or are you asking me?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a preference to start that way. Do the, talk about the new person, or you just wanna start?
Oh, about the new person.
I can, I can quickly give a summary for it. It was in, this time last year, the Public Works Committee did approve it in twenty seventeen for the twenty eighteen budget to add another full-time person, it'd be rate-based, when the budget went to the mayor's for review. That's when it was, I guess, reduced down to a part-time last year.
Yeah, we thought we'd move, start with part-time, and...
Right, and then we, we didn't move forward with that just because the, the work, I guess, there's too much, I don't think we would've got a part-time person to fill that. And I think you, you mentioned at that time that you would consider bringing it back in...
Yeah, I knew we'd have more dollars available in this year, so...
So that's why it appears before you this year. So we, we're looking to add a full-time person that would be based out of the utilities. And it's mainly, the main function of that job would be to complete the Digger's Hotline locating. We're seeing, on average, ten to fifteen locates that come in every day, and a lot of these are relocates, mainly from the boring companies, the fiber companies out there. They'll call in the entire job at the beginning, and we're talking up to two thousand to four thousand feet that we have to go out and locate within a three-day period, even though they might not get to it two months down the road. So then they call in relocates to get to the section that they're gonna be working on next. We spend a lot of time doing relocates, and it oftentimes, it'll tie up two to three staff members, just to get it done to meet that demand.
And they pay a fee for that, right?
They do not.
They do not pay a fee, okay.
It would be nice if they did, but state statutes...
I thought somehow we got a fee for that.
In the right-of-way permit program.
Oh, maybe that's what I'm thinking, okay.
But the main function of this, of this added person would be completing the Digger's Hotline locating. That'd be their main goal for the day. And if, if they have time in their schedule, it'd be nice to tie in our right-of-way permit program with the Digger's Hotline locating program, because they often go hand-in-hand. When there's work that's done within the right-of-way, they have to call in Digger's Hotline. And if we see it come in on Digger's Hotline, we can catch areas that need a right-of-way permit easier. There, there are a lot of contractors that don't call in for a right-of-way permit, but they call in for Digger's Hotline. So if we can mesh those two functions together, we have a good potential to increase our right-of-way permit fees, revenue for the city and our general fund. So right now, because we oftentimes have two to three guys tied up in completing Digger's Hotline locating every day, there are other things in the utility that we're not getting done. So we, we hope to, I guess, level out the efficiencies within the department, and get more work done, and meet the demand for the Digger's Hotline locates, so... Mark alluded to it earlier. So far this year, all total, we've received twenty-six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in right-of-way permit fees. And I think just over twenty grand was from AT&amp;T. And this is just to start, because every company, TDS, AT&amp;T, US Cellular, they're all gonna be coming through with, with their own fiber. You see private companies bringing fiber in, like WPS. Last year's project, they, they came all the way down Broadway to run fiber to WPS. It's gonna, it's gonna happen every year, so we wanna find better ways to capture that, and, and we are, so... But that's the request for the additional staff persons to help, help with Digger's Hotline locating and right-of-way permit program.
So I have a question, and I, that I recognize I should know this, as the Public Works Committee Chair, but it sounds like all this fiber is going underground, and yet, you know, a lot of our utilities are above ground on poles. Is fiber just goes underground, like that's best practice?
Right, fiber goes underground. They, I don't, I haven't seen a fiber line go on a pole yet.
Okay.
And the right-of-way is getting very crowded with fiber right now. And when you excavate, you gotta hand dig around it. And it used to be where they, whenever you're digging around fiber, they always have to have a representative on site, similar to what they do for gas. Fibers at a, a few feet below ground, our mains are deeper, so we have to be extra careful when we dig water main breaks and stuff like that. It's, it's very crowded out there right now, and it's gonna get worse. But yeah, the fiber's below ground, so...
So you got that, we had instance that when we bore into our sewer lines, right? Not social fiber, but...
Yeah, there's, there's a fiber line through a manhole on Broadway right now. We've had fiber go through, and natural gas go through sanitary sewer mains. And so it's getting to the point where we require the private contractors to televise the mains after they're done to prove that they didn't go through our mains. If they go through a water main, we know about it, because of surfaces. The, the scary part, if they bore through a sanitary sewer main, and we don't know about it, we come through with our, our root cutters, or, or the jet power wash, it could go right through the gas main, and there's a problem.
Yeah.
So we've, we've had probably about two a year where we have to have them clean it up, so...
Nancy?
So, I mean, I understand that there, for Digger's Hotline, you know, there may not be a charge for it, but it's, I just, I question the... If there's that many calls for relocation, if there's, and there's so many calls that we're having to hire a whole full-time person, it just seems to me maybe we ought to be revisiting whether or not there's, if somebody calls us half a dozen times versus once or twice, that after a while, you know, there's a fee for that? I mean, it just, I mean, I know we want them to do the right thing, so on the other, so we don't want them to skirt calling. We want them to call, but on the other hand, if somebody just can keep tapping into our services with no fees at all, it just seems a little bit...
I've, there, there's a big circle here, and I'm gonna try to explain it. State statutes has, covers the Digger's Hotline program.
Right.
Digger's Hotline is formed for everybody to call in Digger's Hotline locate requests. I gotta watch what I say. The, I believe the board or the executive committee at Digger's Hotline is made up of private companies. Boring companies, private utilities, things like that. Digger's Hotline gets revenue based off the number of Digger's Hotline locate tickets that are called in. So we average twenty-six hundred Digger's Hotline locates a year. There's no, there's no system in place to take complaints at Digger's Hotline. There's nothing in state statutes that authorizes us to charge a fee for relocates. However, every relocate that comes out to a city is an expense to us, but revenue for Digger's Hotline. Do you follow the circle?
Oh, for sure.
But how, how is the revenue generated? Because, I mean, I know when I, you know, as a contractor, we call Digger's Hotline all the time, and there's an obvious liability there. I mean, you would not want to hit something, and if you don't call Digger's Hotline, you know, you are liable for not having done it, so we're...
They, they charge a certain fee, that, a certain fee per locate is, is charged to the city, and to every city. So the twenty-six hundred locate tickets that come in for us, I'm just gonna throw a number out there, I, I don't know for sure. Let's say it's sixty-seven cents. So the first time that locate is called in, the one-page ticket comes through, that's sixty-seven cents that we owe them.
We have to pay them to, and we're going out and finding the...
We have to pay them. Maybe because they have to operate this program somehow.
Okay.
Based on state statutes. So that's their revenue.
Okay.
And they have Digger's Hotline operators at the phones, at the computer, taking these requests. They have to pay those people, and this is how they pay those people. So now, when a relocate comes in two, three, four, five times, and they do, we're paying every time we have to get that ticket. In addition to paying them, we, we pay our staff four and five times to relocate that same line that we located three months ago.
Right.
And the kicker is, we have to locate each ticket within three days. The locate lasts ten days. After ten days, if they don't get to it, they have to call in to relocate.
Right.
Right.
So it's a cycle, it's a vicious cycle where there's no accountability.
Right, and to go to your, to your example of sixty-seven cents, if it's, is it a ticket per utility, or is it per...
Per request.
Per request, so, so in other words, you get, it's sixty-seven cents, and you're doing gas and main and sewer water, everything all, all at once?
Our utility is water, water main.
Right.
Store main and sewer main.
Right.
Let's say you call in Digger's Hotline request
Right.
for something you wanna do in your front yard.
Right.
Even though it's not in the right-of-way.
Right.
Every utility still has to come out and market. So everyone who receives that ticket.
Right.
Every, let's say there's seven utilities.
Right.
They get money from each of those seven utilities.
It's a deal, isn't it?
For that one ticket.
I wanna be in this business.
So. It's...
But if I may, I mean, so the, the place where the city is getting revenue is when the building permit or whatever, if there is a permit. I realize not all situations, if you're planting a tree or something, there's no permit.
Right, right.
But if you're building something, there should be a permit, and so logically, the city would recover that expense in the permit, I mean, we need to be thinking about that. I mean, maybe we haven't, we probably haven't until now, but that's one way for us to reclaim that money.
Well, and, and hopefully that's where we can help catch more in the right of way permit program. So if these are coming through on Digger's Hotline, we can, we can catch it in our right of way permit program and say, okay, if it's showing up here, then we know they need to pay a right of way permit fee because they're now disturbing the right of way. Right now, we don't have the same person doing those jobs. We try to, we try to communicate, but there's a, a disconnect there. Um, if we can get the same person doing that, we're gonna catch a whole lot more.
And then we'll be getting more income from those.
More income, right.
Where does this appear in the budget, the, these fees that we pay Digger's Hotline?
Uh, it, they, they are divvied up between the three utilities in, uh... So for instance, I don't know which one you have right in front of you.
We've got water right in front of me.
Water. If you look in the... Okay, if you look under miscellaneous general expense in the water utility. Um, the Digger's Hotline annual fee, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars, that's the waters portion.
Okay.
And then there's a portion that's in the sewer budget, and then there's a portion in the, that's in the storm budget. Now, we, we prepay based on average, so we get billed twice a year. And at the end of the year is a catch-up, so if we receive more, uh, more than the average, they'll send us a final invoice at the end of the year. But they go, we save money if we prepaid. If we paid monthly, we'd be paying more.
Okay.
Um, but that's where it shows up as far as, um, paying Digger's Hotline for the relocates that come in, or the, the locate tickets.
Yeah. Jen?
I think Mark mentioned that we're gonna, uh, increase our building permit. Maybe we think about folding these kind of costs into the building permit fees.
We kinda talked, oh, I'm sorry.
Along with the, the added staff or the right of way permit, you know, collecting or catching those, um, issues would kind of take care of this hopefully.
And me and Dana kinda talked about trying to figure out how to do the fee.
Right.
But that's one thing we're looking into right now.
Nancy?
Yeah, just, I, just to follow up, uh, since you originally brought up the question, I'm certainly appreciative of, you know, what we obviously are responsible for versus the other utilities. I was just trying to get a sense of, um, of, uh... Uh, I'm just trying to get a sense of the whole picture because it's pretty amazing, actually. But I, but I, I'm gonna go back to my original point, which is it seems to me, I mean, I understand that the state statute is that they, you know, you can't charge initially for it, but it seems like if somebody just can call and call and call and...
They have no reason not to.
Yeah.
Right, and in fact, it's, it's, in the, the agency's best interest to have people call more often rather than less often.
Right.
Because that's how they're making their money, obviously.
I did ask that question when I complained to Digger's Hotline two years ago. Is there a way that we can charge these folks for, for relocates?
Right.
And there are companies out there that have a habit of relocating.
Right.
There's nothing in the state statutes provisions that says that we can charge these private companies for this. And, um, so if there's any state representatives watching our meeting tonight, if there's a way that we could somehow
Right.
Get an accountability
Right.
Section in that state statute, that would be great.
Does it say we can't? I mean, if it says we can't, maybe we can be the leaders in trying to push it, and then they have to sue us.
All right, I mean, it just seems like it, it's like a three strikes, you're out or something where, you know, the first...
Right.
You know, after three times, or it doesn't even have to be, you know, after one time, it could be something reasonable, but it seems like that, like you said, the repeat, constant repeat.
Right.
Or why limit it to ten days?
Right.
Why can't that be somewhat longer?
I mean, we do that with fire alarms, and we still wanna encourage people to pull a fire alarm if there's a fire, but I mean, after repeated...
I think the ten days, the paint, the paint lines on grass is updated on.
Oh, I suppose, yeah.
The flags get removed, stuff like that. Yeah, homeowners get sick of seeing the flags out there.
I mean, I'm sure the insurance industry is partially involved in this too because of liability and cost with, when you have injuries.
I think there is a way to get a little, uh, we can take a look at it. One of the problems right now is, they call the Public Works Department, and right now they're not, we have, we've had a problem, they're not communicating with their building inspector. It's, we've been working on that. I think they've really kinda got better at doing that right now.
Oh, with, with Mike, our new building inspector?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, there's, the communication has increased.
So now there's a way, I think we maybe add, when we do the building permits, is, I think we gotta get, you know, creative and put in like an admin fee on there from this type of stuff. So I think that when we look at this building permits, like Jen was talking about, I think that's something we're kind of, you know, been talking about, is how to get creative with it.
That would take care of part of the issue, anyway.
Right, so at least get some money out of it, you know, for that cost, so. I think that's when we do this building, when we look at the fees schedules, that some type of fee or something added on there as an admin fee. As long as we keep the communication up, which was the problem before, I think, with the old building inspector, so I think with what we have now, I think we can get a little bit better at this.
So you're a lot more aware of what's going on, is that what you're saying?
And we're getting more cooperation on that end, too.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
There was Marty before, he was a little bit more lax, I think, with that and that issue.
But we can, we can calculate what our staff expense is throughout the year for Digger's Hotline locating, I mean, that's, that shows up on the time cards. But I, I understand the basic obligation to do the locates, it's, it's just the, the, the three, four and five. You know, two, you might, might be okay with a, a second relocate, but...
Still, if they're not doing, if they're not doing locates, it will be, we're still behind some of the utility work, so.
Right.
It would be that, and we would do a lot of stuff we haven't been done before.
Right, right.
I would encourage our Public Works, uh, Chair and Co-Chair to take this issue up and see where we can go.
I'd be all for that.
Yeah, I mean, again, the more we push the issue, the more somebody will
Right.
Respond.
Right.
I'll take a, a second peek at that state statute to see if there's a, a way.
Yeah.
A loophole.
Yeah, it doesn't say not to.
To Andy's, right, to Andy's point, it might be one of those, better to ask forgiveness than permission if it doesn't say not.
I mean, if it's costing us more money, then it's costing them, I mean...
Right.
I don't see anything right now.
What's that?
I don't see anything right now.
In the state statutes, yeah. So, uh, that's the summary for the request for, uh, the extra employee.
Sorry, last thing, thanks for bringing that to our issue, for our attention, I mean, 'cause otherwise I'd have absolutely no idea. And I encourage all department heads to figure those things out, because happy to tackle them.
Yeah, okay. So do we wanna go to water?
Go to storm water.
Storm water?
Okay. What page is that?
One sixty-four.
Okay.
The only item that has a, somewhat of a significant, significant change for storm water would be the brush collection, uh, increase. Uh, the other half of that, again, would be in the forestry budget. That increase is one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's based on the contract pricing.
Any questions?
Okay, water's another page. One sixty-nine. Okay, for the water utility, the water analysis outside services decreases by two thousand dollars, and that's based on the, uh, annual DNR testing requirements that we have. Twenty nineteen will be a little lighter year for sampling. Now, the next item would be maintenance of water treatment equipment increases by two thousand five hundred dollars. That is, uh, just for twenty nineteen only, uh, that'll drop back down in twenty twenty. Uh, we have a spectrophotometer, uh, that's well over twenty years old that has come to the end of its life. We use that to test our chlorine residual and fluoride residual. So we'll be buying a new, new meter for that next year. It's not gonna be the large expensive spectrophotometer, it's gonna be just a HAC DR nine hundred, it's just a tabletop tester just for those two chemicals. Next item would be the reservoir and tower material repair that increases by fifteen thousand nine hundred. That is a one-time expense, um, as well for twenty nineteen only. We have to complete DNR required inspections on the three reservoirs and water tower next year. And, uh, that, that portion is nine thousand six hundred dollars. And the air handling unit at well three, uh, needs maintenance, and that's six thousand dollars. Uh, there's a solenoid valve that needs to be replaced, there's a leak in one of the lines, and we have to run a new wire, uh, for the solenoid valve. So, uh, again, that fifteen thousand nine hundred is a one-time expense for next year. Uh, meters outside services increases by two thousand dollars, and, uh, the increase is for, uh, testing the large water meters, um, and hydrant meter testing. Uh, we plan to buy three new hydrant meters, which is the next line, and, uh, they have to be tested, uh, on a certain frequency, so we wanna increase that by two grand. The next item would be the material, meters material and repair. That increases by three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the purchase of three new hydrant meters and backflow preventers. That's a one-time charge. And, uh, for FYI purposes, uh, the city does receive revenue, uh, based on that hydrant meter rental program. The next item would be hydrant material and repair increases by nine hundred dollars. We want to buy, uh, the reflective discs that would be placed on all of our private fire hydrants. That, that expense for the private hydrants would be nine hundred dollars, that'd be a one-time fee. So, the fire hydrants that are in like, uh, Menards parking lot, inside their fence area, at UW Health Clinic, at Meriter, WPS, um, if they're on private property, they're considered private fire hydrants. But we still operate and maintain those fire hydrants. The, the discs are mainly to let others know that it's a private hydrant. Mainly the business owner, um, the business managers, our staff and the fire department staff. And then, uh, just a way to identify those fire hydrants.
So, Jen, to, to that point, if it's a private, but you're saying we're responsible for maintenance.
We, well, we, okay.
What does the PSC actually say?
We, we have to flush private fire hydrants as well. Uh, the PSC considers us responsible, responsible because it's our water that's at that tab. If, if the, the private fire hydrant, uh, is leaking or needs repairs internally, we notify the business, and we can do that work and bill them for it, or they have to hire a company and, and pay them to do it. We prefer to do the work because it's, it's our system that's impacted by it. So that's what I mean by we, we operate and maintain it, but if there's a repair charge, they pay for it.
But we can charge fees for our labor. I like, I like the Digger's Hotline, right, okay.
And Dan, just, when there's a fire, we just plug in wherever. I, I know you're not the fire chief, but I, right, they, they take the water wherever, I mean, we don't not use private hydrants.
Oh, we do, what waters you, I mean, the, more than likely, if there's a prior, private fire hydrant, like, like, let's say on site at Menards, it's because the fire code that three hundred feet, um, requires it. I think, I don't know the code, the fire code.
Right, right.
That number three hundred feet, uh, from the building or something. Either they have an internal system with outside connections, or they have to have a private fire hydrant that they have to install nearby. That helps with their fire protection.
And does a private hydrant mean that the water itself is on their meter as opposed to the city?
No, no.
It's just on their property, it's not in the right of way?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, the, the private hydrant is there to meet their fire needs. In the distribution system, the fire hydrant has to be placed every six hundred feet or less.
Right.
Um, but if it's on private property, it's there to meet fire code.
Right, got it.
So.
Thank you.
The next item would be telemetry outside services that increases by one thousand dollars. I have on that sheet fifteen hundred, but it's a, it's a thousand dollars. Uh, to better account for our SCADA and contracted communication repair service at our pumping stations, and a portion of that is, uh, not written down here, but it's, uh, for the annual software, uh, program that the SCADA operates on, uh, the annual license. The next item, regulatory commission expenses increases by one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and, uh, that increases to better account for the expense related to the PSC review of the water utility. And I believe that would be it for the water utility unless there's questions on some of the other line items.
Anyone? Guess not.
Okay. The final budget, sewer. Not a lot. Page eighty-one?
One eighty-one.
One eighty-one? Watch your foot, Mark. Mark, do you wanna explain what you handed up there?
This one, this one show you, this is, uh, it was, it has a metro charge for the sewage. Just to show us, you know, with all their capital they've been doing, um, and it increases every year. So this year they're increasing it by six point three percent, the charge for, um, disposal service MMSD cost, so we increased that by, you know, six point three percent. As you've seen in the graph, you know, from two thousand twelve on, how much it's increasing over years. And our usage has basically stayed the same. So a lot of it's just, you know, with all the capital stuff they're doing, their, their charges are, um, passing on to us, and we have to pass on to our customers here. Um, so that's really been increasing, um, since two thousand twelve. And a lot of this, the I and I that, you know, Dan has talked about, there's the capital, but I just wanted to let you see kind of the graph. And if you look at this year's graph, you can see already, the third, we got three quarters worth for two thousand eighteen. We're already higher than we were for two thousand fifteen, twelve, you know, two thousand eleven, two thousand ten, so this is an issue that, you know, unfortunately, it's just getting passed on to our customers, but this is, you know, by, I'm sure by two thousand twenty, it's probably gonna be nine hundred thousand or more, so. This is a, it's just a cost that, it's not that we really have much control over, that we just have to pass on, so it's, I just wanted anybody to see that, kind of the graph for that.
Jen?
I was, um, I think I mentioned this at a public works meeting, that I think this would be important to pass on this information to our customers so that when they do see an increase on their bill, like, we can put that in those little memo, like, hey, this isn't our fault, this is something that, you know, is beyond our control.
Right, and this is really the, other than, you know, I and I, which is, you know, something we've been working on, it's really...
And we've been working on it a lot, and we've really tackled that problem with the Manona, and it'd be nice to see that MMSD is doing the same.
Right, so, yeah, we made something for that on their bills.
The, the first two quarters of this year, we were, we were tracking on, pretty well with our budget. The third quarter, when we had all the rain and the flooding, that bill jumped by twenty grand or so.
Yeah, roughly.
Um, so, I mean, before that came up, we were doing pretty good for our budget this year.
Right.
For MMSD. But, um, you know, I, I have here the MMSD treatment charge increases by four point seven percent for twenty nineteen, and, uh...
We increased it, I don't know.
Did you raise it up higher?
Yeah, we increased it, we got the letter from them, it was like six point three.
Eighteen, eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay. But to kind of update a little more on that I and I, um, capital project we have. MSA has taken all of our, um, sanitary sewer videos. They've taken our record drawings, they're, they're finding the weak areas in our sanitary sewer system. Right now, we're, we're focused on the, uh, the northwest part of the city, uh, Twenty Wathah, Midmore, um, Winnicke Road, that whole northern corner up there. And it'll be in, in future capital project years where we start addressing some of the issues. We, we found areas that have, um, cracked mains. I don't wanna say collapsed mains, but there's, there's areas that we need to address in our... I don't want to say collapsed mains, but there's, there's areas that we need to address in our, in our sewer system on our behalf. Once we tackle the, the sanitary sewer mains, once that's done, we're going to have to focus on the laterals. Because there's, there's probably just as much I and I coming through the laterals as well. So we're starting from ground zero and M S A is doing a, a really nice job pinpointing the areas. They already have it on maps that we need to target first. So I believe by this time next year in the capital budget, we're going to be coming forward with some request to help repair our sanitary sewer mains. But we had, we had a good chunk of money in twenty eighteen to tackle some I and I research. So our first area again is reviewing our mains. After that, we're moving on to the laterals. But we're focused on that, that northwest area of Manona because there's a lot of springs up there. And, and that's the area that we're most concerned with. The, the groundwater table's quite high out there, so. Anyways, moving on. The list station outside service account increases by five thousand dollars to complete the annual list station water, wastewater wet well cleaning. Uh, we've moved that out of the maintenance of mains account and put it into the list station account. Basically, at every list station, there's a, a big tank that all the wastewater flows to before it's pumped out of there to the, the sewage plant. And once a year, we bring in a rotor router to clean out that tank. There's debris that settles out in the bottom of the, of the tank that we, we need to pump out. So just the reallocating that there.
Is, is that anticipated a change with the removal of the lift station that we approved?
This cleaning, uh, that is, that's one of the list stations that does get, get cleaned, uh, annually. Part of that capital project, if, if the research reveals that, that can be eliminated, this cost will be reduced the following years when that, that's taken out of service. Yeah. That's all I have. Unless there's questions.
Anybody? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry we kept you so late.
No, not a problem.
It was nice of Mark to give up his time to Dan, so apparently he's done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would have been bad. Yes, and it's very true.
We kind of finish up here quick with some of the small things here. On page forty, twenty-four legislative, um, these are, we had some minor things. Legislative actually is no change from last year. This is basically, uh, your guys' salaries and then we do have five hundred dollars in there for any professional development that you might want to go to. So that's unchanged from last year. Judicial, which would be the court services, um, uh, the judge and our court clerk is in this. There's no increases to any supplies accounts. The only increase would be for wages and health insurance. Underneath that is legal. So there's three types of legal, which is court. That would be, you know, uh, Bill Cole or attorney representing in a court case. Uh, as far as like ordinance violations, speeding tickets, that's ones they, they hold here in this room. That's, we left that unchanged. I've noticed this year it's actually come down a little bit, so we just kind of kept it the same as it was last year. Underneath that, city, the legal retainer, that's our attorney, Bill Cole. That's mainly the work he does for the city. As you can see in two thousand seventeen, it was ninety thousand. This year, I think it's only going to be roughly around ninety-five thousand. So we did reduce it down from one seventeen to one ten. So wanted to look at, maybe cook it down further, but for now, I think, a lot of times when it's up is because there's a lot of court cases that are going on. And right now, knock on wood, um, we don't have any major court cases going on. The ones are, they're kind of winding down. Outside of, outside of the TIF nine stuff, this is just pure non-TIF related stuff. And they've been spending a lot more time in the TIF nine, so this is, um, not been used as much as, uh, has been in the past. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen, there were some larger cases back then. Legal, non-retainer, we left that the same. And that's, we use those in case, uh, we've used in the past for union negotiations or, if we had some disciplinary issues and public safety, we'd use those would come in, we'd use an outside attorney for that. Some years it varies up and down and, and before that, we barely even used this account, so it varies from year to year. And basically, the union negotiation should be wrapped up by year end. We won't, based on what it's going right now, we won't need an attorney for anything. I think we'll be able to settle that without using that, so I think we're okay for the next, for next year.
Andy?
I'm sure it's been discussed at some point, but have we ever considered hiring an internal? I mean, a hundred and seventeen thousand is quite, quite a bit. I don't know if, I don't know if we'd pay probably more.
I have a feeling internal would pay a lot more probably, yeah. I don't know.
Couple of years ago, I know internally, I know, I don't know if we ever talked about it at council. We have talked about it internally and we looked at it and from our talks, we'd be, we think it'd be more expensive to get an attorney for this price. But it has been talked about internally.
Anyone else?
Next is the executive other, executive office on here. Sustainability's in here, so I'm not going to touch on that because Brad's going to be here on Monday, so I'd like him to speak on that part. A couple of things in this budget. The executive salaries right now, um, we did budget that based on the, uh, the salary range for right now. Could budget, we're currently in the lower range, but that's where it's, it is budgeted based on the ranges though. Uh, administrative intern, um, we decided to eliminate that. We had one last year. We just didn't see the need for it internally.
It may come back in the future, but it didn't work out very well and.
Right. Might have been more in management issues with that, but, you know, a lot of it was falling on Leah and Leah didn't really have time to, to use the intern. So we decided for this year, especially with the new administrator, I think, would be easier without it for this year. The other other changes is, um, major changes. We did eliminate the communication consultant. That will come to an end at this year's budget. We didn't put any money in for next year in case there was something that came out of that. Last year, that was also paid by fund balance. The twelve thousand and the twenty thousand did, was part of last year's fund balance applied. And the family medical leave study, um, we didn't need to actually use money this year and we don't need to budget for two thousand nineteen for that because it's already a new fund for, for two thousand nineteen.
Questions?
Did you mention, um, the marketing tourism fund? Is that a, isn't that a?
Yeah, so that's part of the twenty-one thou, okay, that's.
The marketing fund, yeah. That's the tourism dollars.
Yeah, and that's right now an estimate. We'll have a better idea what that number would be, but give or take, that'd be right around there.
Okay.
It will be going up the year after. Two thousand twenty will be a higher amount. Nineteen's levels off. And in two thousand twenty will be higher. Two thousand twenty.
And we can count on that money? Because I thought that was money they had to release from the.
That's money we have to give to other people.
Other people. It's just an expense.
The other, we get to keep, I don't know what the percentage is, but this is the percentage that we have to give to the tourism commission controls.
And I'll give or take, maybe some of the final numbers are for budget purposes.
Jen?
So that twenty thousand we had budgeted for the family medical leave study from last year, we didn't use, that went back to fund balance?
Right.
We moved that to what we're proposing for the family medical leave for.
So basically it ends up goes into fund balance balance, so technically you could say, well, we didn't use it this year. We just shipped it over there. It's just a matter of.
Yeah. When you propose, when you make budget amendments, you should say where you'd like the money to come from, to cover it. So you could just say from fund balance.
Yeah.
We have a lot of other things that went back to fund balance too that we didn't. You know, we budgeted a certain amount, but if we don't spend it all, it goes into fund balance. But we have used quite a bit of the fund balance. Yeah.
Speaking of, I'm going to hit on something we get done, but it just reminded me, this year, we did, we did, uh, budget, a little off topic here. We did budget a loss this year using fund balance. We did have a good, we will have, end up having a good year this year. We'll actually end up ahead. Probably about two hundred thousand and part of the reason is going to be the billing permits. Interesting comes way up this year in those two things and there's some staff changes and some vacancies that were not filled right away. Like dispatch was not filled until just recently and we budgeted for, you know, July. So there's been a lot of changes and savings, so we will actually, budget for loss, but we end up having a, actually surplus. So that's part of the reason why the fund balance is ruined too. That just reminded me of that. Um, administration other, just kind of, kind of, you know, a couple of things here on the pages. Page forty-six starts assessing a property. So this is our assessor. So this will be the last year, um, of our contract with Accurate. So this, two thousand nineteen, we'll have an R F P to go out for bids for a new assessor. We'll determine how we want to do it. If you want to do, currently how we're doing it, um, what method we're going to use. So we'll have that, probably get that fairly early in the year and we want to start looking, working on that R F P next year for a new assessor. If you want to switch or go off a bit with that.
How will that work going forward? Because I know for the last four years, they've done a quarter of the city each year.
Yeah.
Do they just start over doing a quarter of the city or do we consider it done for a while and?
Right. State loss as we, I think the trigger is it's, if your assessment ratio goes below ninety-two percent, that triggers automatic revalue. Right now, we're roughly around a hundred percent, ninety-nine percent. So we, technically, we don't need, we could just say we don't want to do it for four years or we still want to keep on doing it quarterly or doing, I mean, we have.
We, that's something we'd have to talk about.
Something we're just going to talk for in two thousand twenty, what method we, how we want to do it. So that will be part of an R F P of what process we're going to do.
Okay. Anybody, any questions?
Page forty-nine, I just want to hit, this is the insurance. Insurance and bonds. Workers comp is up. From a hundred and nine thousand, we budgeted and took a hundred and twenty thousand. Year in estimate actually is about a hundred and twenty thousand. Just fair, last year, we received an estimate last year, uh, from Civ Mick. And their estimate was this number, a hundred and nine thousand, a hundred and seventy-three. They give us before we do an audit over our numbers and once they do the audit, they said our actual numbers should have been about a hundred and twenty thousand and that's what they're estimating for this year. Reason why is we added more public safety staff. And public safety staff has a higher workers comp ratios and just, is number of, uh, number of employees increasing, especially in that area has caused for the increase. The one good factor is, is we don't have, we have very few worker comp claims. We probably had about twenty-three thousand dollars per year max. We do have a low index factor.
I was just knocking on wood there. It's always, it's always good, you know, you care what you say. I was, I, I did want to ask, like, do we get an experience rating, just like a private company does?
We do. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we do get a dividend, so basically there is a revenues, we're going to talk about, we do revenues on, on, uh, next Monday, but, page, let me see if I can find it here quick, if I can find it. It's under page twenty-two, the description says insurance recoveries, about forty thousand. We do basically get a dividend Mac of about forty thousand, about premiums.
But that plays into these numbers, right?
Well, this is the gross amount, let me get the net, the gross amount of revenues. Actually, in that effect, it'd be about eighty thousand.
Okay.
On page fifty-two, legal taxes, write-offs. This year we're budgeting seventy thousand. What this is, is basically the Walmart. And we are using fund balance for this. So we, like I said, we, we did not get the, uh, court case settled before the board review was closed. Since the board review was closed, we couldn't actually change the assessment. So they will get a bill, then we have to refund them their portion, which is roughly about sixty thousand. The other is about a ten thousand we have to write off per year of the Lincoln personal property taxes that ends up being that were uncollectible. Underneath that is other financial uses. This is basically money that's from the general fund that gets transferred in to other funds. We've always had a standard increase or transfer to the C D A to help pay for their, uh, funding, fifteen thousand this year. Here's a transfer to, I have F M L H, I had to rename that. That's the thirty thousand dollar transfer. Basically comes out of fund balance and it goes into, how we transfer it over to that fund. And then two hundred thousand dollars for the debt service. And that's all I have for those.
Questions, anybody?
Could we just clarify what transferring to the debt service is exactly?
So there's two separate funds that, uh, financials, there's a general fund, which has a big fund now, so there's a debt service fund. For accounting purposes, we have to show how that money went from basically one box to the other box.
Okay.
So it's just an accounting transfer.
All right.
Anyone else?
It really means nothing.
Okay.
Let me have to show it. Uh, the other one is, so we, we're, I'm doing planning for ninety, page ninety-eight. So the current salary on here is, uh, just basically the old salary we had with Sonny. And just added the two point two five on there and kept her, the insurance right now at family until we hire somebody in there for now. We did leave this outside services. We did, uh, they did budget, the, uh, the, the committee did budget twenty thousand to continue with the sign survey. If there's any things that came out of there that needed, we bumped it down to fifteen thousand. And I think the sign code, uh, right now is in the process. It's been through planning commission. I know they're making some more changes to it. Eventually, we'll get here within, within the next month or two, um, once it's all been through those, those committees, so. Take a look at that.
Yeah.
And the last one is C D A on page one-on-one. Really, this is, uh, C D A's is basically, the expenses that go in here are for really non-TIF related expenses. So it's kind of challenging because the C D A does do TIF related, um, stuff and they do have costs. But they would go to each individual fund. So these are the stuff the C D A works on that's non-TIF related. So the C D A support staff, which we keep the same, is Gary Becker. This number is up a little bit high this year for his, his cost. I think it's probably too high the year in estimate, but that's just for the transition right now. But it's probably going to be, actually probably around ten thousand dollars in the end. Probably over budgeted, over estimated that year end. The one thing we did change was marketing. We had a, they had a seventy-five hundred. We reduced it down to a thousand. This one, just from prior history, it hasn't been used, uh, since two thousand fif, two thousand fifteen. Part of it was, was more, uh, getting, uh, getting their word out there for the C D A if they're doing any marketing for, you know, um, any type more, any developments, things like that.
We probably spent that in fifteen for the riverfront, I assume.
That probably was before, yeah, it became a TIF. So, you know, a lot of times it ends up being a lot of those costs end up becoming TIF costs, so, TIF eligible. So this is, it's kind of starts here and then we kind of figure out where it actually ends at, yeah.
Jen?
Would our renewal Manona require marketing?
Um, yeah, so renew Manona, um, will eventually be in, it's a different fund for now. It's in TIF two, but we'll, for two thousand twenty, we'll have to have a,
Okay.
They'll be holding a budget, a separate budget for that. But in two thousand nineteen, it shows in TIF two for now, because that's where we have to do it for accounting purposes, for state statutes. But then two thousand twenty, they will put it in its own separate fund and then we'll have a cost that will go into there.
So we won't have any costs in nineteen, so we can.
Well, we can still divvy out the money in nineteen.
But the cost won't be in this budget, in the C D A budget.
It's a little, very confusing.
No, I get, I get.
No, I get, I get it.
As far as that, we are finishing up with that at the CDA. I think we're meeting again in November. We're kind of narrowing it down to how we're going to proceed with that. And that, again, we'll have it, I think we talked about getting it approved in January, February, the actual policy. And then that'll come here for final approval, and we'll start that fairly soon, as soon as we get that approved and start marketing it.
Any questions? Nancy?
A couple of things. Well, I guess the primary thing is, as it relates to marketing, I know it's something I've raised before, but it just seems to me that, that while there may, you know, we may think of it simply in terms of a particular development like the Riverfront, that we're, we're in a strong position in Manona. And as a community. I mean, and it just seems to me that there's, there's opportunities, I mean, with new staff coming on potentially as well, there's opportunities to be more proactive about bragging about the assets of Manona and doing business of Manona and re, you know, relocating your business in Manona as opposed to, or, you know, having a small development here than, rather than just being kind of a, more of a, you know, vessel waiting for somebody. I mean, I know certainly in plan commission, you know, it's definitely more of a reactive process of. And I just wonder if it makes sense to leave some additional monies in marketing with the intent of trying to be more proactive rather than reactive on the, on the economic development.
Would that fit in CDA?
It would fit, it would support more economic development as far as that, then it would, yeah. If you're talking more in general, then that'd be a different budget.
No, I mean, in terms of actual economic development of attracting businesses or whatever, I don't know. Obviously, up to CDA, but I just, it seems like we're, we have a lot of assets. And if we're attractive to residents, I think obviously we can be more attractive to business and.
Part of the problem is having a place for them to go. You know, like property that is available for them to move into. Too, I don't disagree with you, but
Right.
It's not like we have a lot of vacant land that we can market to people to come and build on.
And maybe that's, the CDA takes a look at it, if they want to do some type of marketing.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we bring that up at CDA?
I don't know if there's, you know, yeah. Probably something the CDA could look into.
Probably, be something to talk about after we get a new planner.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And let's give them, whoever that is, a chance to kind of get the lay of the land and see, but what they think, you know, holes they can fill and.
That's all I have for tonight, yes.
Anything, anybody have any questions? No, we'll be back on Monday to do this again.
Just one last thing, I know it's going to be a short notice on Monday. I just want to say, you know, if you want budget amendments for the first read again, you'll probably need them by next Monday, or next Wednesday, a week from today. So just thinking about that, if you want the first read again, you'll have to be on the first read. But if you want them in the package, I think getting them by Wednesday or Thursday, Thursday, Monday. Just be thinking about that.
And you can certainly always submit them for the second read too. I, we're sorry that this is so delayed. With everything going on, the flooding, we just, we ended up having to push the whole process back like two weeks from our initial plan. And we had hoped to get it out to you sooner, and we have this.
And do no risk with health insurance and other stuff to.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. See you on Monday.